All right. Good evening. This is Anna McDevitt and I'm going to call back to order the school committee meeting for August 24th, 2001. Just to give a little quick update, we started our meeting at 6:30. We did not go into executive session and we went into recess until 7 o'clock. So I just want to kind of put that out there. The first thing is I would respectfully ask that if you do have a cellphone, that you try to silence it just to kind of minimize the noise and some of the echoes that are here. This is actually the first public meeting that we've had with live participants here since I think March 12th, 2020. Couple of quick things. I made the decision in consultation with Dr. Gilligan to move the meeting to here, the senior center. We did that on Friday morning so we could post our agenda. Our agenda has to be posted 48 hours prior to the meeting, anticipating that there would be a larger turnout and we wanted people to be able to attend and be socially distanced with that. On Monday, the town manager, Melissa Murphy-Rodriguez, put into that we would be municipal buildings would be requiring masks. And so correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Gilligan, regardless of if we had the meeting here or at the school administration building, both are municipal buildings and we would be masked in both either location?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing that I would just say is obviously there was a decision by Desi earlier this morning. We had set our meeting date, I believe, back in July, end of July. So completely coincidental in terms of that. All right. I'm sorry?
Pledge.
Oh, God, I forgot the pledge. I'm sorry. Oh, there's a pledge. Sorry. All right. Thank you. So we are going to pause and we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. I apologize.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Apologies, I forgot about that. All right. So before we get started, I do just want to point out a couple of quick things on the agenda. I did modify the agenda. Normally, this return to school would be later on in the meeting. I think that's why everyone is here. I don't think you're here for the minutes. So we are going to roll into some public comment and then we will do consent of the agenda and then return to school policy for that. So just wanted to be respectful of people's time. Dr. Millie, could you present the slides for us real quick? Yes, my? I can't see it yet. Yes, yes, thank you. Okay. So I want to talk just a couple of quick minutes about public comment. I have on the agenda a goal of about 20 minutes or so. I do anticipate that we'll probably go a little bit longer for that, but I do want to kind of be respectful of people's time with that. So the second thing I'll just kind of point out is the public comment. I will actually read this for folks who may be in the back. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between the citizens and the school committee. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of the school committee business. The committee may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comments shall be for a period of up to 15 to 25 minutes, with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Can you go to the next slide too, please? Okay. So again, this is the first time we're having an in-person meeting. In the past, we had emails. I don't know about other people in the room, but I was not excited for a five-hour reading of email type of meeting. So we are not having emails, so you can be called in or you can be here in person. Just a quick summary of the emails that I got up till about today. I categorized them into two different groups. People who specifically said that they were parents and then if they didn't say that, that they were within our community. So if you take a quick look, we had about 68 parents, 33 saying or recommending or asking for all masks. There were 32 that requested parental choice with that. There was one letter that came in that was signed by a number of different individuals. Those individuals also, a number of them also sent emails as well, and I counted each family as one within that. There were one where they recommended elementary and anybody who is unvaccinated be masked. Anybody seventh grade and above have the choice. One, which I thought was a little real, of just keep them in school, don't really care, just make them stay five days. A little bit of get them out of my house is what I kind of read in that. And then from the community, one that was very clear in terms of choice and that if they are unvaccinated, they should be masked. For a total for that. So just kind of wanted to let people know the type of communication that we receive. I will say, if you look at those numbers, we are pretty divided if you kind of look at where that is. So it wasn't leaning one massive direction versus another. Dr. Millie, could you go to the next slide? So again, I don't know what that is. An alarm clock. Okay. Maybe my time's up. So again, we're not going to be reading public comments. We have a goal. I'd like to kind of keep us in the 20 to 30 minutes. I think there's some important information to talk about how we return to school with that. I would ask that if you are going to speak, and we encourage people to speak, that we be mindful of just new comments that are coming out. To say the same thing multiple times may not lead to the best discussion and use of time. We did have 12 people who requested to be called in. In fairness and transparency, I contacted all 12 of them yesterday to say, you know, Desi is making an announcement. I will let you guys know. After Desi made that announcement, I reached out to them. Six people, I'm sorry, five people requested not to be called. One person said that they would be here in person. And six people did not respond and I am presuming are awaiting a phone call for that. So as we move into public comment, Mrs. Picard is on the screen and she will be able to help and assist us in terms of having participants dial in. And so what I would like to do is kind of have a little bit of an alternate with that. And so have three people who are here actually have the opportunity to speak. We'll call three people on the line. It's like dialing for dollars. You know, you got a couple of rings and then we're done. We'll move on to the next and then come back to three in person, three who are on the line, and then go forward from there. Does that sound fair to the committee?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So is there public comment? And I would ask, if you are going to speak, there's a microphone there so that the listening audience can hear you. And when you start, please state your name and address for the record. Yeah?
I don't speak.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Jen Knapp and I'm a nurse and I specialize in infection control. I'm a mom of four kids in town who attend four different schools, from kindergarten to high school this year. So with regards to the cloth face coverings, I understand that we no longer really have a discussion about whether we can choose to have masks on our kids at school any longer. That's unfortunate because the governor gave us that choice and I think we should push back if there's enough people who want this, at least to give children a choice. And the reason for this is the kids don't really know how to use these face coverings like they should be used. They're not as effective as a surgical or in N95 mask. And recently, MassDPH has made guidelines where everybody should begin to start changing their masks more frequently. It's just not clean to wear a mask all day, take it off, shove it in your pocket, leave it on your desk, eat your food, put it back on, not washing hands in between. It's not doing the kids any good. There's all kinds of pathogens that will be on those masks. They're not getting as much oxygen into their lungs and therefore into their brains when they're wearing masks and we all need to remember that. There's all kinds of bacteria and viruses that stick to those masks and can get into their mouths and into their lungs and we'll see other illnesses as a result of that with kids. The reason I really think that we should consider this is because children so young are not really impacted by COVID like adults are. As we see with the numbers, only very few children are actually hospitalized from this. And most likely, they have comorbidities. So I really want us all to consider what's best for kids in general and not instill false beliefs in them that a cloth face covering that is basically they're wiping the floor with is going to keep them safe. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And I apologize. What was your name again?
Jennifer.
Jennifer. Okay, thank you.
Street.
Okay. Second comment from the room. You don't have to, I'm not, come on up. Try not to be formal.
All right, nice. It's not that easy. So just thank you, Mr. McDevitt, and the school committee for recognizing my public discussion. Mr. Gilligan, it's been some time since I've presented in front of you. I think about 20 years or so, psych class. It's good to see you again.
I think it was actually controversial issues.
Yes, yes. Weekly. I want to present some quick data points for the record gathered from the CDC website.
What's your name, sir? I'm sorry.
My name is Glenn Callaway of 10 Woodchuck Lane. So let's hit that again. I want to present some data points for the record gathered by the CDC website and highlight the extremely low risk newborn to age 17 for COVID-19. I did put a printout for those who are interested to submit this for public comment, which I will read off. Leave those right there. So February 2020 to May 29th, 2021, that's two COVID seasons. There were approximately 26,838,244 infections. Of those infections, 200,000 children were hospitalized and 332 deaths. 332 deaths. You could say it means it's low, but every death is terrible. But we put that in perspective. Compared with the flu, this is one season against two COVID seasons. You have an average of 11 million infections, 46,000 hospitalizations, and 450 deaths. So you have more deaths in one year from the flu. The raw data provided by the CDC on how deadly the flu is for our youth, it was a radical idea to mask our children for the flu. Today, it is a radical idea to mandate masks for our children for COVID. Today, an unelected board committee members of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education voted amongst themselves to grant additional powers to the commissioner to propose a mandated mask against, you know, just the mandate, just hey, this commissioner's going to be granted this power. This was after refusal of the governor to mandate a mask and the legislator punted the issue. I can hear the reaction now. Our hands are tied. There's nothing we can do. For those of you who are interested in what our school committee can do, you're the advocates of the students and the parents. You don't have to be passive navel gazers to the edicts coming from the DESE. I encourage you to push back. You can contact the DESE and reject the arbitrary regulation and overreach. You can seek the school attorney. When the supervisor concludes that the unusual types and amounts of professional legal service may be required, he, she will advise the committee and seek initial or continued authorization of such service. Or simply put, he may not comply. The citizenry confine of these options are pursued by our school committee by submitting public record requests. Members who remain passive to such overreach are interpreted as kneeling to those authorities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll do one more and then we'll go to the phone. Kevin? Sorry.
Kevin Doobie, 76 Boston Hill Road. I'm going to be very quick. I'm just following up on what Jen said earlier. As of August 18th, the state has been now actually recording demographics of people that have been hospitalized. In the two weeks preceding August 18th, 723 people have been hospitalized for COVID in Massachusetts. Of that, 16 were under the age of 20. So you can see that there is a very, very small portion, considering those under 20 comprise something like a 15%, 20% of our population and comprised almost negligible percentage of the hospitalization counts. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Mrs. Picard, are you able to get caller number one here?
Sorry about that. I had it set up, but when I went, I need my cell phone away. Give me just a second and I'll put the phone over again. Can you hear the rain horns?
Yep.
Yep.
Hello, is this Sona or Jirva?
Yeah, I'm Sona.
Sona, this is Helen McCarry from the theater school committee and we're going to move to the room to make your public comment. Please start with your full name and street address.
My full name is Sona Sukla and my street address is 27 East Green Drive.
And go ahead and do your comment. You have three minutes.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
You have three minutes to make your comment.
For mask requirement?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. So yeah, I want my daughter to wear mask because my son is on high risk on coronavirus. He's a special needs kid and he's just 31 months. So yes, I want her to wear mask. Last year, she was on OL just because of him. And I don't want him to get infected by any chance. So yeah, I want my daughter's security first and then my son's too because that is the most requirement. And because of coronavirus, we don't go outside as much as being used to before. It's just he don't get infected or my other kids don't get infected. So yes, I would love to have masks in a school for my both girls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can hang up the phone now.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Caller number two?
Yep, working on it.
All right. Okay, caller number, caller number three?
Yep.
Hello.
You need to mute your other device. Okay, so they don't have a call. Do you want me to try calling them again? They just need to mute their other device. If they had on their TV or their phone or whatever.
They're watching in person. Helen, they're in person.
Okay, so this person's in person?
Yes. Okay.
Do you want me to make any more calls or stop for now?
Nope, I think he's going to come up to the podium. So.
Okay, great.
All right. Thanks. Just come all the way up so we can, so people at home can hear you, please.
My name's Todd Quinn and this is my wife Sabina Quinn. And for the record, and Dr. Gilligan, how you doing? It's been a while.
Good to see you.
So I want to let my wife speak first and then I'll speak after her. Ladies first.
All right, you have three minutes.
Hi. I just wanted to say real quick, I know people's been talking about the mask situation. Some people agree, some people disagreed about it. I just believe that my daughter is a special need and also she has a couple of heart, open heart surgery. And when a kid with open heart surgery, not only one but two and probably three because she also had another surgery that he had to do with, they had to put through the vein, through the heart, to see the heart. And when we have a child that had that, that, and you see all the kids that have an inflammation of the heart, you know, with all these situations that is going on with the, not only, not only with the vascula, but also having respiratory issues with the, with the, with the lungs and different other things. I am really worried about it and I just want to present that to you and to everybody over here, for those who thinks that especially kids are not, are more at risk. They are more at risk, but with the mask, they are worse. Because I push them, I put them in a situation that they can probably die, you know, either way. Either way they go, they can probably die faster. So and then my son also, we have a son as well, that my son is really, you know, very careful, you know, of my daughter, everything we do, everything, everywhere we go. But just to put that in perspective for you, you know, especially the kids, you know, are very delicate and to have a mask in a school, I'm telling you, is a death sentence for them.
Let's keep mine real short and simple. I fought Kuwait. I'm a disabled American veteran. Live right down the street. And I think what's important is that our kids have a freedom of choice. If they want to put a mask on, great. If they don't want to put a mask on, great. If you want to get the vaccine, great. If you don't want to get the vaccine, great. I think there's a lot of dissension that happens from all this stuff. And in my beliefs, I think, you know, I put God first and I'll be very religious here, is that I pray about this stuff because I hate to see all the stuff that goes on in this country when it comes to all this crap. And, you know, I think that we need to bring it together. And that's it.
Thank you. All right. All right, so we'll come back to three in the room and then go to the last, I think the last three that are at home.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Callaway and I live on 10 Woodchuck Lane. So I joined the morning, the meeting this morning with the DESE board members. And what I heard from that discussion was things on the line of, we should trust our commissioner, you know, we should wait for more teachers to get their vaccine. We've had the summer. We've had a long time. So at what point, you know, my question is, and by the way, the other board members, you know, sat there in silence, seemingly complying with this. So I'm appealing to you as our elected school committee advocating to stand up for what is right. At the end of the day, looking at facts, we've discussed them here tonight, children are not responsible for the transmission. One flu season resulted in more deaths than two COVID seasons alone. When does this stop? I just can't understand why we would ignore science and go off of fear. Why not provide personal choice, responsibility, my rights, my freedom? If someone wants to wear a mask, go ahead. I don't care. At the end of the day, do not force a mask on my four, five-year-old child. He will be in school next year. He's five. I'm a woman. I'm a grown woman. I'm sweating here. I can barely talk because like I've got this mask on my face. I'm an adult. I don't care. I worry about the children. It's not right. Children playing basketball, playing sports? I just can't imagine. And why? Why ignore the science? So that's why I'm appealing to you. I don't think it's right. We want freedom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McDevitt, you want to make the next call?
Nope, we're going to do three here and then the last three from home.
Okay.
Your home, actually. All right. Sorry.
Hey there. My name is Joel Schwint. I live down on 235 Green Street and I have a daughter who is in Arkansas Elementary. We're a lot of folks talking about individual choice here and that's an important thing. That's the cornerstone of our constitution, no doubt. But throughout our country's entire history, public health issues have always superseded individual liberty, going all the way back to George Washington who required all of his troops to be inoculated against smallpox during the Revolutionary War. And in fact, the Supreme Court enshrined that decision in 1905 in Jacobson v. Massachusetts, one of the few rulings that's over 100 years old, which has never been overturned or significantly modified. And this is the issue. We don't have a choice anymore to do online schooling. That choice was taken away from those parents who are particularly concerned about COVID. And so now, if another student chooses not to wear a mask, especially with the arrival of the Delta variant, which I might add, postdates all those stats that have been quoted to this point, a variant which is anywhere from 100 to 250% more infectious than the variant we were dealing with last year when y'all did a fantastic job of keeping the schools as safe as possible with the mask mandate in partial capacity. And one of the reasons is that it's got a viral load that I found 1,000 times larger than the original variant. Even one particular document from the CDC suggested that it might be as infectious as the chickenpox. And if the chickenpox had even the capability of killing a child, even if it's not that many, but if it had the capability, if it had the capability to put a child in the hospital with serious illness and in anywhere from 5 to 10% of cases, create symptoms in the cardiac system, respiratory system, and the nervous system that will last their entire lifetime, would you really allow kids to be in a situation where you're putting them in that risk? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. One more from the room?
Please.
Right, one more from the room, right?
Good evening. My name is Danielle Duggan and I live at 48 Beacon Hill Boulevard. I wasn't planning on saying anything during the public comment this evening, given this morning's Desi announcement, but I feel compelled to put my thoughts on record. Living through a pandemic means that information is evolving as we learn more about this disease and that we need to change our responses as we learn more. So this morning, we have a new policy decision that was made in response to the evolution of the facts at hand. I was pleased to see some statistics presented tonight to know what's happening in terms of emails that you're receiving here in North Andover. But I think that those reflect the noisy people. Polling in the state has shown that 81% do approve of and stand in favor of masks in K-12 schools. That's a poll done by Mass Inc. Analysis done of surveys of epidemiologists, public health professionals, infectious disease specialists by Stat News shows that there's one issue, one single issue that was surveyed that all of those professionals agree upon, and that's the need for masks in K-12 schools. 28 out of 28 professionals agreed on that and nothing else. I also would like to see that we follow the recommendations made by those who are truly working in this field. The CDC and the AAP, the American Academy of Pediatrics, have recommended masks in our K-12 schools. And I have to think that they know more than I could ever learn from a Google search or reading a few articles about what may or may not be the best course of action. When two national level agencies or professional organizations that work in the field make that recommendation, that's where I'm inclined to throw my support. So yes, I would like to see our K-12 schools masked until we learn more about the evolution of this disease and when we can truly say that our students will be safe without that. and when we can truly say that our students will be safe without that. Additional layer, we know it's like Swiss cheese, right? We need a bunch of layers, a bunch of strategies. This is just one of them, and I would hate to see us throw away a strategy that has been proven to work in the name of choice.
All right, Ms. Picard, we're gonna go to, I think, caller number four.
I've dialed the number eight, but I don't know. I can check that it's calling, but I'm not hearing a ring. So I can hang up and try again?
Uh, why don't you s-
Hello, please your name, number, and route message.
Okay, so then I'll straight to machine, and I will call the next person.
Okay. And just while you're doing that, I did email everyone right before the meeting and let them know we'd be calling between what I anticipated 7:15 and 7:45.
Okay, we've got the next one dialed.
Happy sales, I am able to contact them right now, if you need your-
All right.
Okay, and I have one more. And it is dialed, we're waiting for a ring. Hi, this is Helen Picard at the North Andover School Committee, and I'm calling David for a public comment.
Hi.
Is David available?
Yeah, he's available, he's on the queue.
Thank you.
They told her.
What?
Hi, David, this is Helen Picard from the North Andover School Committee, calling for your public comment. And I would ask that you start with your address, and then go right into your public comment, and you will have three minutes to speak to us.
I missed the meeting, I thought the meeting happened now, so I, I don't really have a comment. I just saw that the mandate is, is over October 1st. I was just confused by that because how is that a specific date? Like, how was that date made? Our address is 230 Andover Street, not Andover.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. So unfortunately, we're not gonna answer questions unless you had a statement that you were making.
All right.
Well, I did the statement that, you know, the email, you guys can't, it's not very detailed. It doesn't provide you like all the information. We both read the email, we were under the impression that the meeting starts at 7:00 PM. It turns out that 7:00 PM is when you have to make the comments, and you have to actually watch the meeting at 10:00 AM in the morning. That would be nice going forward, you guys can just provide like explanation from A to Z, so there's no future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
And that is all the phone calls, Mr. David.
All right. No more phone calls. I, I do thank the, the public that is here and the public at home for kind of a little bit of, I'm not gonna say, well, I'm gonna say hybrid of a meeting here for, for the public comment. But, all right, I will follow up privately with, with David. Additional comments from the room?
Hi, I'm Helen Fuller, I live at 5 Rosedale Avenue. I am a parent of two North Andover Public School students, both of whom are under the age of 12, and therefore both of them are unvaccinated, not by choice. I am also a pediatric nurse, I've been a pediatric nurse for 22 years, most of it in the ICU at Boston Children's Hospital. I have seen the effects of respiratory infections and illnesses on children, and it is not a pretty thing. I have also seen children wearing masks all year. Yes, they're unhappy with it, but they do it, and they do it well. As a parent and as a town employee, I can say that they do it well. So I've never, I've spoken to you guys before as Nurse Fuller, this is my first time speaking as a mom, and I'm not usually one-to-one who crosses that border, who crosses that line, who says like, I'm really here as an employee, I'm not here as a mom. But this summer is making me very concerned. I look at the numbers when we left school, when the kids were all wearing masks, and we had zero cases in town. Right now, we have over 60 this week. That makes me very nervous as the parent of two young children, two, two children who cannot be vaccinated. So I please ask that you please consider this, and it may be a moot point at this point, but please consider a mask mandate until we have further improvement. Thank you.
Very quickly, could you just comment if you're a school employee or not?
I am a school employee.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Janice Phillips, and I live at 355 Osgood Street. I'm writing today as a mother of two vaccinated children and imploring you to require masks for all students and staff in K-12. I understand that at this point, hopefully it'll be out of your hands, but that's not quite a done deal yet, so I felt the need to comment. We've made progress in fighting COVID, but as the Delta variant soars, as evidenced by the cases we have in town, we know that a multifaceted approach is necessary to keep our students safe. This year, going into school, from what I understand, there won't be distancing requirements, so that right there takes away one of those levels of protection that we had last year. It makes it even more important that everybody in the schools is masked. The CDC and the AAP recommend universal masking in schools. It just makes sense to listen to the leading experts and follow their recommendations. Like some of us, I know that each of you places the health and safety of students and staff as the highest priority. As such, I support a universal mask mandate for all NAP students and staff, and I ask that you do the same. Based on rising numbers of COVID cases impacting younger and younger people, and the fact that none of our residents who are under the age of 12 even have the choice to be vaccinated yet, this is just one way we can keep people safer in our schools. Thank you so much for all of your work on behalf of North Andover families.
Thank you. All right, just super fast, so we've gone probably about 30 minutes. I'm happy to continue for a couple more minutes if the committee thinks. I'm not sure how many other people are interested in speaking. Okay, so two, three, is that fair?
Sure.
Okay. I'm happy to have more, but I don't wanna, okay, sorry, go ahead, please.
Thank you. My name is Carrie Levenberg, I work, live at 465 Ray Street. Got a fourth grader and an up-and-coming kindergartner. No one, of course, can be vaccinated among the two of them. The facts that have come out in this meeting are very interesting to me. They're, it's pretty amazing the breadth of knowledge that can come out in a room this size. The one thing I haven't heard talked about is long COVID. There's no relationship whatsoever to whether you get long COVID, it's the house sick you got. You might have no symptoms whatsoever, and it's lined up with long COVID, just like it happened to my niece. All right, she was 18. And she was an athlete, and she is no longer, because she cannot, six months after she caught it, catch her breath after being active for more than five minutes. This is not something I wish on any child who needs to know how to play. The second thing I've heard talked about here is freedom, and I think freedom is very important. But we give up pieces of our freedom all the time with no problem. No one has any problem with giving up our freedom of not driving on the left side of the street. Why can't I demand a drive on the left side of the street? Well, because it'll hurt other people. So we give up a piece of our freedom. If not giving it up means people who don't have a choice will get hurt. So the question is, if, I mean, we need a mask mandate because we wanna make our kids as safe as possible. To go the other way is asking the question, which kids are we willing to hurt? How many? And that's not acceptable to me. So, uh, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Hello, Blob Kenny, 137 High Street. I've heard a lot of different opinions on this, and it's, it's a touchy issue. A couple of things, just other options, maybe. One of the problems here with the K through 12 is, especially the younger kids, facial expressions are huge. They're more important than communication with a lot of young kids. You learn more, you react more, so forth. That's lost. The other thing is, every study that's seen, the paper mask does very little. A virus is teeny, 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 like goes right through everything. Go outside in the winter and breathe, where's all that vapor going? So if, you all have kids, we all know, you see what they do with the mask? Touching their face, throw them on the ground, pick them up, wear them for three weeks. Maybe institute washing hands all the time in school. Maybe wiping dust down three or four times a day. Maybe social distancing a little more. There are other options, I'm putting these kids in bondage and behind masks. That's all.
Thank you.
Rebecca Strong, 657 Forest Street. I wasn't gonna speak, I submitted a public comment, I felt really compelled right now. At this juncture, I'm actually happy that I'm not sitting on that side of the table, and that I'm able to speak as a regular North Andover, lifelong North Andover citizen. I have two children in elementary school. I'm here in hopes that the committee uses common sense, community data, and metrics, and critical thinking, and votes to make masking in schools a choice. I'm not anti-mask, I am not anti-vax, I am pro-parent choice. Everybody in this room, if you're not familiar with this, this is called an EpiPen. I carry around two of these for my son everywhere I go. I carry around masks everywhere I go now. Do you care to understand which is proven to have saved thousands of lives from anaphylactic reactions? This. This paper mask will not save your life. Period. My son, now nine, going into fourth grade, has multiple life-threatening severe food allergies. And epinephrine injectors go wherever we go. One tiny bite of something he's allergic to, he's allergic, severely allergic to eggs, could land him in the hospital and could potentially be fatal. We have had to deal with this risk every single day for the past eight and a half years. His first symptom of an allergic reaction is swelling of the mouth and swelling of the lips, and hives around his face. If this were to happen in school, it could easily be covered by a mask. My son is a great self-advocate. However, these reactions are incredibly scary for him, for adults, for me, who is prepared. It has been also proven that early intervention, particularly epinephrine administration during an allergic reaction, is critical. If a universal mask mandate is implemented and a reaction is covered up, and a child, possibly mine, is sent to the hospital, how will you feel? Are you prepared to be responsible for that? The danger of my son having an allergic reaction is far more probable than him becoming ill due to contracting COVID. A universal mask mandate could prevent him from a full recovery. My son is also asthmatic. As a baby, he was hospitalized for RSV, pneumonia, reactive airway disease, requiring intravenous magnesium to relax the smooth muscle around his lung, so he could breathe. All of these ER visits resulted in hospitalization for days. It was due to complications from, guess what? The flu. Did I ever ask his daycare providers to put on a mask? No. Did I ever ask them what their vaccine status was? No. Why are mask mandates and proof of vaccine now the norm for a virus that is not nearly as fatal as the seasonal flu in children? A universe, I don't believe in the concept of safetyism. The ideology that people are weak and should be protected rather than exposed to challenges. The sooner we can accept that a mask mandate in schools is exactly this, the sooner we can move on and face other critical challenges in our community. We need to allow families to make choices for what is best for their particular circumstances. We need to respect others' choices in this matter. Respect is a critical tenet that we are constantly reminded of as part of North Andover's values. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tenille Travers, 136 Lancaster Road. I have four school-aged children, and I wasn't gonna speak tonight. But after hearing everybody, I just wonder if there are other options, even with masks. Masks don't, I'm not anti-mask, not anti-vaccine. I just wonder if there is another way. When we go to a restaurant, we walk in, we sit down, we take our masks off. Our kids are socially distanced, three to six feet apart, they have to wear their mask every day. We see people get up and speak, take their masks off, maybe not here, but in public. Our kids have to speak with our masks on. Isn't there a compromise? I feel like I know all of these people in town, and we're so divided. It's either black or white, and there's no in-between. We're, I, I can't even believe like how, I'm shaking, because we're so, we're neighbors, we're supposed to be a community, and we're at each other's throats over masks. There's no compromise. Why can't there be a compromise? I don't understand why, anything, like why can't we treat our children like we treat the adults? Why can't the children go and, and sit down and not, and take their masks off if they're not speaking? Why can't they act like we do? Why do they have to wear a mask for eight-plus hours a day? Why? I, I don't understand. I don't understand why there's, there's not a compromise to be made, why we're at each other's throats over a mask for our children. Not anti-mask, I don't understand why it's not used as a tool. If we're seeing this as a, a medical device or some way to mitigate the virus, how do we know it even works when they've been wearing masks throughout the whole time? How do we know? I have four children, they've been sick four times last year. Not, none of them with COVID. Tested every time, tested multiple times, none with COVID. All got sick. I don't understand how people say their kids don't get sick, they didn't get sick, I got sick. It happens. I don't understand why we're looking to this to solve all our problems. There's not a problem to be sol- solved yet. Why can't we use it as a mitigation tool instead of a precautionary tool? Why are we going into the school year when, I think there, I, I don't even know how many kids, I don't even know the data, because no, I, I, I don't know, everyone has different data points. I don't know how many kids are in the hospital, how many kids are sick with COVID in North Andover. I don't think, is there, I know I'm not allowed to ask questions, but is that data-
You'll see that in a few minutes, yeah.
Okay.
I thought they were allowed to ask questions. She said if we're making a statement, you guys can answer questions.
No.
No?
No.
So my other, I'll just put it out there, it's a question because I'm curious. Since the commissioner mandated it, mandate's not a law. Is there a way to take that mandate and use it as a compromise? Wear it in common areas. Kids were in camps all, all summer. My kids went to sleepaway camp. They didn't wear masks while sleeping in cabins, like is there a way that we can mitigate the virus without all or nothing? Or even the mandate? Can we use the mandate as a overarching, you know, cases go up to this number? Can we be transparent? What number is that? When it comes down to what number, we take the masks off? Like, how are we knowing what we're doing? And then the other side of things, I know that everybody-
Yeah, I am gonna call Tom here.
Time. I just wanna say that there are other issues with mask wearing that have been said, like my four-year-old who does not know facial expressions or social cues, because she's been in a mask for a year and a half. I have a, a five-year-old that didn't know her letters, didn't, is not gonna learn to read because she can't see the face of the people that are speaking to her. But I'll leave it at that, I just, I think there should be a compromise.
All right. Do the last comment, I think?
I think that's taken, I didn't know if you were cutting it off after.
No, you were standing there, so, okay.
So we're supposed to start with name and address, is that right?
Yes, please, thank you.
I'm Lauren Perry, I'm at 176 Carter Field Road. And I did submit a written testimony to everybody that's sitting here, and some studies to confirm it, and I know that there, I know it's a very heated topic, and so I won't take up too much more of your time. But I do think that the most important issue at hand is choice. I don't think that there is, I mean, everybody says, follow the science, follow the CDC. Well, the CDC is not a government agency, and they're not a law-making agency. And the largest study they've done to date on COVID transmission in schools, they did in Georgia, it was 90,000 students. They said that distancing hybrid models, classrooms barriers, HEPA filters, and most notably requiring student masking, were each found to not have a statistically significant benefit. In other words, these measures could not be said to be effective. And there's a lengthy article that was in the New York Times here, and there are also Boston Emergency Medicine doctors that, that speak in here, too, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, too, because nobody wants to hear that right now. But I, I think you could easily argue from both sides of the table that there are plenty of experts that can make a case that uni- universal masking has no notable benefits to children, and a lot of negative side effects for them. And I think when we talk about a town that has over 30,000 residents and a number of 60 that are six, I think that's a, it's a hard, I think, jump to make that that's an emergent situation where universal masking of children who are not known to be carriers should happen. I mean, more kids have died of the flu, more kids drown in pools every year, and we're not banning pools, and we weren't wearing these masks every flu season prior to this one. So I think allowing parents to have choice in, in medical interventions for their children is a tenet of a free society, and I'm really surprised that so many people feel like that should be sacrificed for what's primarily, it seems like, political theater and fear from people that, I mean, if your kids, if you feel more comfortable with your kids wearing them, I think you should go ahead and do it that way. But I don't think that your fear should drive another parent's decision on something that can have such a significant impact on children's well-being. So, thank you. Appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you. All right. So any public comment from the committee? Ms. Picard?
No.
Okay, Ms. Petrowski?
What are you asking?
Public comment, sorry.
If you guys have zero comment on what was said tonight, if you do care about anything that was said by, not a single word, not a single answer.
We, we will be discussing things.
You guys make the decisions, right? Do you think you're a trailblazer? Trailblazer, like, you know, be different.
Thank you. Ms. Petrowski?
Nothing. Okay, so, um, listen, we are divided. I don't think this is a whole representation of our community. This is not an easy decision, it's not something that I don't think any of us take lightly. You can find data to support both sides of the argument. Looking at this as a teacher, and a teacher of high-need students who need to see my face when I'm teaching, it's hard, and I don't want to wear a mask. But we don't have the, the alternative to do remote learning. So if there's a surge, what happens? There's no, there's, there's nothing. We, we would, we can't do remote learning. And so what's the alternative? I, I mean, right, but I'm not, but-
No, no, you, you don't have the floor right now, I'm sorry, sir.
So, I'm not, I, I can't, as a mom, and as a, as a mom, as a teacher, as a community member, and as a member of this committee, I can't say that we can put this on even one case. Like, whose child does it take? I just, I don't see that.
Why is it not learned? What happens if they're still in search?
Mrs. Mabley?
So, Plan A should be no mask and learn in person, and then you have a Plan B.
Mrs. Mabley? Any comment?
I would like to see the presentation.
Okay, Mrs. Lynch?
Same thing, I know that we have a presentation, I thought that's when we would be doing our discussion.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we're going to jump to consent agenda, and then we will start with a presentation of the health update.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on July 27th, 2021, as presented in the packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Mrs. Picard?
Yes. Oh, wait, don't we have that motion? Did we? I'm sorry.
We had one.
I just made a motion.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just got a little bit lost, I was looking for the minutes in my packet. Yes, I had heard the minutes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mabley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so five o, minutes are approved. Okay, so let's move on to the return-to-school health update. Mr., Dr. Mealy, I'm sorry, you're going to be presenting, are you speaking, Cheryl?
Dr. Mealy, I'm starting with the first few.
Okay, okay, perfect.
I'll just introduce, so, if you can start off, Dr. Mealy, with slide two, and we'll introduce the team as we go. I want to say, as superintendent of schools, that my top priority is this, our goal is to safely bring back students fully five days a week, every day of the week. Remote is definitely not an option, and we want to bring students back safely and to learn, and I think that's critical. Secondly, DESE did actually relax some of their standards, they had a mask mandate last year, as you know, and we rescinded the mask policy when DESE relaxed those, the mandate from the school year, in the beginning of the summer. Over the course of the summer, different recommendations have come out, but on Friday, the commissioner called all superintendents in all school districts across the Commonwealth, saying that he was going today for a vote, which was approved, to mandate masks across every school in Massachusetts. So the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education granted DESE Commissioner Jeff Riley the authority to require masks for all public schools, K through 12 students, educators, and staff through October 1st. After October 1st, he will look at middle schools and high schools, we'd be allowed to possibly lift the mask mandate for vaccinated students and staff, only if they meet a certain vaccination rate. At least 80% of the students in a building are vaccinated. Unvaccinated students and staff would still be required masks. And so, his press release that came out-
So what about those kids that can't get the vaccine, need the vaccines? Well, they're subjected to ridicule and torture.
We'll be talking about that.
Yeah, so that was the mandate, you know, the, the DESE mandated masks, voted to give them the authority to mandate masks across all schools in Massachusetts. Next, I would like to introduce our COVID Task Force team, and up at the podium right now is our lead director of health services for the North Andover Public Schools, Cheryl Bazak, and she's part of the COVID Task Force, which is made up of Brian LaGrasse, our public health director here for the town of North Andover, Melissa Rodriguez, the town manager, Dr. Kenneth Chan, who is the North Andover Public Schools physician. I participate as superintendent, along with Dr. Mealy, who's the assistant superintendent, and Lorie Marks, the assistant superintendent for teaching and learning. And they make up the COVID Task Force. And I'm going to turn it over to Cheryl for the presentation at this time.
So, this first slide, I thought it would be a, a good opportunity to show the cases that we currently have this year compared to last year. So the first, on the far-left side of the chart, is June 24th. And June 24th was the last time I spoke to school committee, and I was happy to report that, as a community, we had zero cases, and also zero cases in schools. And at that time, we were able to make a decision based on our data, based on our daily active case rate in our community, that we didn't have to have masks during summer programming. So I think it's important that our COVID Task Force does look at the information every day. And Brian's here, and he might talk about some of the cases in our community, but we met weekly all through last year to make sure that we were making decisions based on what was happening in our community. So the summer was working well until, I'm just speculating, probably because of Delta, our cases started increasing. We started having more cases mid-July, and as of today, we have 63 positive COVID cases actively today. The next slide?
It's coming.
Right here on this slide, this is the distribution of cases from-
It's confusing, I'm not at all.
I know, it's really hard to see.
I'm sorry, it's, we will-
So I-
It will be online as well, sorry.
So today, our cases, zero to 11, are seven cases, 12 to 15 is three, and 16 to 19 is one. The largest group is between 20 to 50 years old, and the much lower number is the older residents. And this is tot, it's different from last year, so if we look at what happened last year, it was people over 50. So we are seeing our younger population with, with the positive cases. So I looked, so this summer-
Who are those kids who are in the hospital?
So this summer, the positive cases, just in the last month, from July 20th, there's been 23 zero-to-11-year-olds, eight 12 to 15, and seven 16 to 19. That's just this last month. So, so I'm just telling you our positive active COVID case in North Andover, I don't-
So they can be asymptomatic and, there's no breakdown of those kids, you're just saying-
I'm going to have our physician, Dr. Chan, he's going to talk about the, the patients that he's seeing in North Andover, okay?
I want the data.
And I'm breaking up here who's vaccinated, who's not vaccinated, and that's 67% of the, this last month, these cases. The last column is the number of people in North Andover that are vaccinated. And that comes off the state website every Thursday, that's updated. That's all I have for that side.
Thank you.
Based on the information that we learned this morning, it's important to keep track of who's vaccinated in our schools. We don't have, right now, how many peo, how many staff are vaccinated, I'll have that information the first week of school. But Massachusetts has a vaccine registry, and all of the school nurses have access to the school registry, the MIIS. And so whether you're, whether these students are vaccinated at the CVS, or in one of our school clinics, we have every single person's vaccination status. So this is updated every Friday, it's brought into our electronic health record, so each week, we'll be able to present how many students in our high school, actually in every grade, are vaccinated. So making mass decisions, this, people alluded to this earlier, it's, there's things that we all have to think about. Preventing spread, have an equity lens, something that's non-stigmatizing, as well as, how can you monitor and enforce it? So the second row, having all masks, which, that has a green checkbox in all of them, the recommendation that may come out tomorrow, that you would only mask unvaccinated people, was going to be difficult. As a school community, we're going to have to think about, what do you do for, for children that are wearing masks, as opposed to ones that are, and same thing with staff, and how do you monitor it? So, we have a whole month until October 1st to, to think about this and how that might happen, or we could continue to look at our town data. What is our active daily case rate? Like in June, when it was down lower, we can make decisions, not just on vaccination, but also active cases. So it's just what we're going to have to talk about and think about over the next So all agencies have agreed that we want to be in-person, full-time, five days a week. They agree that vaccinee, vaccines are a primary mitigating measure. Physical distancing, to the extent possible, but not at the expense of keeping kids out of school, so we want everybody in school. And if we want to be able to provide lunch, we're going to have to allow them to be closer, so that everybody can be in school, and everybody can be in class. Mask-wearing strongly recommended, and of course, the other mitigation strategies, we need to continue maintaining ventilation, all of the hand hygiene, that was put on very strict schedules in all of the schools, as well as continuing to work with parents to keep kids home when they are not feeling well, as well as staff to stay home when they're ill. The next slide. So, as we've learned more and more, they have changed how we're going to monitor symptoms. The four top symptoms, which are in bold, having a fever over 100, difficulty breathing, a new loss of taste and smell, and muscle aches or body aches, those are the three standalone symptoms that we would encourage you to keep your child home for. They have loosened up some of the other guidelines, it was really hard for parents and for nurses last year. If a student came in with a sore throat or a cough, they would have to, a parent would have to be called, and the student would have to go home and be tested, and we're trying to move away from that, and we're trying to have policies and procedures where we can keep kids in school and not have to be home to be tested, as well as be quarantined. We will continue to have the on-call nurse. The next slide. Another way that we're going to be able to keep more students in school is some, something that DESI, the state, and a company called CIC is allowing us to start doing this year. We've already applied, and we've already been accepted. So there's three options, and we've selected the first two, and that's symptomatic testing in school, as well as test and stay.
The PCR test?
I'm going to tell you about that right now. It's a good question. The goal is to keep everybody in school, everybody can be part of it, K to 12, or pre-K to 12. There's no cost to the district, but I do have to be clear that this is only for students with symptoms, or students that were determined to be in close contact while they were at school. So if you traveled to Florida and were positive for COVID, and your children had to stay home because they're close contacts, they can't come to school to be tested. This is for only in-school situations. The other component is, parents have to consent to this. So the next slide is what you will get in an email, this is what it's going to look like, and every parent has to sign up for this ahead of time. So if a student comes to us with symptoms, or if they've been considered a close contact, we won't be able to do the test unless this has been done ahead of time. We can't call you up that day and say, oh, your son or daughter's here, can we test them? So, we're going to get that out as soon as possible, probably tomorrow, and that way we will have the consent on file, so that we can, again, the whole goal to keep more students in school. So what it looks like, it's the Binex-Now Rapid Antigen Test, and I brought one. So it's a nasal swab, it looks like this, and it's simply a nasal swab, and it gets put into this, kind of like a pregnancy test, and you get two pink lines, it's highly accurate. They've used it, it's accepted by DPH, we can use this instead of a PCR, and so we have already ordered them for our district, they should be here soon, and once we're all trained, and all the supplies are in, and we have all the consents, we'll be able to start this. Again, just to help parents, so that we can keep more people in school. That's, so if someone has symptoms that are not those four bold ones, I mean, if someone has a fever, they have to go home. And of course, if they have, test positive, they'll go home, but if it's a mild symptom, a headache, a cough, sneezing, we can test 15 minutes later, back to school safely. So, that should really help with the student absences and having to go home.
Cheryl, just like, to clarify, so you're saying that kids are in school, they ask the teacher, I have a headache, they go to the nurse, you could administer this and say, you're fine, go back to class?
You can stay in school, as long as we have parent consent.
Okay. And obviously, yeah, okay, thank you.
How far up the nose are you going with that test? No, seriously?
So it's right at the end of the nostril.
Okay. My wife has had it, they go three, four reaches up.
This is, this is a different, this is-
They had to get a negative test, so they went to the cell test, up the lobe.
This one only goes in the early part of the nose.
Sorry, so I'm, I'm going to just keep going, sorry.
We're going to continue with Cheryl, thank you, though.
So that's for symptomatic. The other test that we're allowed to do is for close contacts. Again, a close contact identified in school. So that would be a close contact, for example, on a volleyball team. That's a school activity, and instead of the whole team having to quarantine and be tested on day five, and not come back till day eight, we can test those students every morning for five days, and as long as they're negative and asymptomatic, they can stay in school. So this is a- So this is another program that we'll be able to have.
So I have a question. It is true that you can test positive if you have a negative.
Cheryl, please continue, Cheryl.
I'm sorry. So the task force that we talked about, the COVID task force, our recommendation is that masks would be worn by students and staffs indoors, on school buses, except designated breaks, and when eating. We're going to continue with all mitigation strategies, hand washing, ventilation, and staying home when ill. Implement this in-school testing and surveillance. Reevaluate our vaccination rates and our active COVID cases. And we're also setting up vaccine clinics. We have a mobile vaccine clinic set up to come to the middle school and high school this, the week of September 13th. And there are also, the link is to 600 sites in Massachusetts where you can get a vaccine. And I'm going to let Dr. Chan, our school physician, unless someone has questions for me.
No, Dr. Chan.
Mr. McDevitt, I do have a question for you.
Sorry, didn't see you there.
Do you need us to wait till the end? I can do that as well.
Before Cheryl sits, that'd be fine.
So Cheryl, you talked about the test and stay and symptomatic testing. I know the state is also offering what they're calling routine COVID safety checks. It used to be called pool testing. And I'm wondering why we're not recommending, why you're not recommending that with the conversation we're seeing in the COVID task force.
So that's a great question. And actually, it's good to point out to parents that when they consent, you have to consent to all three tests. Because all three tests are being offered by the company, and they only have one consent form. As a COVID task force, we met and discussed starting this program and thought that the first two programs would benefit our community greatly right at the beginning. And if we find that we're having a surge, then pool testing is an option, and we can easily change and add that. But to go in and test every single student in every single class is a lot of time when we don't have, we don't know yet how many cases we have in the district. So as a task force, we asked that we could wait and do that a little bit later. But we do have that option.
I have a follow-up question. And I think it's for Mr. McDevitt. Will we be required to vote on the testing, as well as any other policies? And if we were to vote on doing only the symptomatic and close-contact testing in school, if we wanted to change to include the routine COVID safety checks, would we need to recommit to vote on those things? Or are these things that can be done administratively without a sort of a vote?
No vote required.
Thank you.
Dr. Chan? I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your attention. Thanks for letting me present to you. And I thought probably the best way I could give this talk is not so much as a consultant, but as a general pediatrician in the area, what my experience has been and how it might come to light with how we would proceed forward, and give you some insight as to why DUCY is acting the way they are. So I am a local pediatrician in a rather large pediatric practice. We see about 300, 300 to 400 kids a week in our office. So I think we have a pretty good pulse of what's going on in the community, of what's coming in. We also have connections with doctors downtown in the Boston-area hospitals, and have gotten lots of input from them. And obviously, we talk amongst ourselves about what we think is good for our kids and for school. The whole pandemic here has, to me, the pattern has been, it's about creating a school plan, creating a plan, then making observations with what you've done. Observing patterns that develop, then trying to make adjustments as you go along. And it looks like, from what I'm, what we're seeing in our office, is we're going to have to make those adjustments yet again. So if, we can maybe go back a little bit, and I can have you guys follow what our thinking was as good as far as a year ago, when we were talking about the beginning of the 2020, 2021 school year. We were talking about a whole bunch of different things, right? We were talking about remote learning options. We're talking about mask-wearing, social distancing, aggressive contact tracing measures. And like, we didn't really truly have a lot of information about those kinds of things, how effective they were. And so we, as physicians, we said, well, you know, let's just be careful and just see how this goes along, right? But as time went by, we started to get information in as to, well, what's effective and what's not effective. And so let's talk a little bit about some of them. For example, social distancing. You know, the six feet apart, three feet apart. The six feet apart is more like if somebody's talking, some of them, you know, or if they're sneezing, it's about six feet away before particles get on them. That has not found, been found to be super, play a super role, a big role in transmission. And that's why DUCY is kind of stepping back from that. What really is the issue is, you know, after a certain point, if somebody with COVID is in the room with you after a certain point, eventually, the whole room is affected. In other words, it's at risk. And it really comes down to, well, how long are they there? Are there other measures that you're doing to keep them? So if they found, like, for example, in a room, there'd be your index COVID patient, but there would be people on the other side of the room who would get COVID probably from that person. It wouldn't be the people next to them. So social distancing wasn't as big a deal as we thought. So that's why they're not doing that so much. For indoors, for mask-wearing, it seems that the data is showing that mask-wearing and ventilation are factors that can change or reduce risk as well if you wear masks and if there's more ventilation. There was this MIT study done in, I believe, in June, where they basically took different measurements and tried to use, like, for example, a standard classroom. And again, I don't understand all the math involved with that. But looking at it, they compared their models to real-life situations, and they found that it seemed to coincide pretty well. So in a scenario with a standard classroom with no ventilation, with no mask, if you have one person who has COVID, eventually, everyone in the room is at risk within an hour. If there is ventilation, then, with no mask, then they found that there's risk after about seven hours. If you add, if you do a mask without ventilation, that goes to about eight hours. If you have ventilation and a mask, the risk for everyone being in the room to get, possibly get COVID is about 80. So, and they've shown, like, with other things, for example, a bus, an enclosed bus. You have your index patient, yet it's not the person next to them who ends up getting COVID. It's elsewhere in the bus. It's like the whole bus is affected, right? So eventually, everyone, so that's what it comes down to. Other things that were done last year, remote learning. I think every, you know, all of you know that we've, you know, me and my partners have been very vocal about the negative effects of remote learning with regards to academics, emotional well-being, and kids gaining weight. We also, it also shows, you know, with remote learning, it really didn't seem to really affect transmission of COVID either. It seemed like, you know, there really wasn't much in-school transmission. So during the winter and spring, you know, the vaccine came. People were giving out, people were giving out vaccines. And we went, the rates of COVID went down. In January, when it was at its peak, our office was seeing about five cases a day. Eventually, it came down to nothing for about two months. So not a single one. We were actually quite thrilled and hopeful for the next year. Back in June, there was a lot of talk amongst me and my other colleagues. It's like, maybe we don't need to wear a mask this fall. That would be great. And, you know, people are getting vaccinated, rates are going down. But in July, we started to see, started to see patients again. It would be two months, and then one came in. Couple weeks later, another one. And now, we're at, we're having daily cases in our office. This time, the pattern seems to be a little different. Again, these are observations, okay? Younger children seem to be more, you know, infected a little bit more. Vaccinated patients and their parents, usually, they seem to have protection from it, from a COVID. But it seems like now more families are affected. In other words, in January, we would see a whole family. Half of the family members would get COVID, and the other half wouldn't. But now, we're seeing cases where it seems like the whole family might be affected as well. And that's kind of inconsistent with what's going on with COVID, with the Delta variant. We're starting to see some unvaccinated parents with breakthrough infections. Although they're not as sick as the unvaccinated, there's now maybe some information to suggest that they might be participating in spread too. Hard to really say. Again, we don't know.
Dr. Chan, the Barzak, they definitely have a spread among the vaccines.
Okay. Yep.
Please continue, Dr. Chan.
So for the, for the start of the next school year, there are really some questions that we just can't answer yet. And so we know that the Delta variant is more infectious. But we don't know how sick the kids are. If we talked two or three months ago, I could tell you, yeah, those kids really aren't very sick. But we just don't have enough information yet. We know down south where there are lots of unvaccinated people, that, you know, ICU admissions and kids are up. But again, we don't know the numbers yet. Is an ICU admission down south in Texas, 1 in 10,000? Well, that's a pretty good number. But we just don't know those numbers yet. Those will be coming in, but we have to kind of see. We don't know how sick these kids are getting. That's really what it comes down to. Some comments real quick about mask-wearing. I think there's a lot of confusion about masks. Because if you ask somebody a simple question, do masks work? It's, to say yes or no, it really depends on what you're looking at. I think maybe an analogous situation might be the flu vaccine. Does the flu vaccine work? It's not a simple yes or no question, answer to it. So if you're to say, for example, for the flu vaccine, if somebody says, well, does it prevent me from getting flu? And is it good at that? The answer is, not really. On a bad year, it's 40% effective. I mean, 60% of the time, it doesn't prevent you from getting flu. But if you do other measurements, such as hospitalization rates and, you know, level of illness and death, well, it certainly makes a difference. So the same thing can be said for mask-wearing. So when you, when somebody asks, do masks work? It's more thinking about, like, if I wore a mask and somebody had COVID, how good is my mask in preventing me from getting COVID? And they found that the information is not particularly great. There's a little bit of effectiveness, but not great. What's more important is if you have a kid who has COVID in the classroom, if they have a mask on, then they're preventing some of the spread. And that's been found to be, you know, somewhat helpful. So it's really, you know, you want, we don't know who's going to come into a classroom with COVID, obviously. So to have them with the mask, that's really key. I mean, I remember, you know, my first reaction, you know, back in the fall of 2020, you know, about masks. You know, all of us, all of my fellow pediatricians and I looked at each other and said, well, do we really need to do this? You know, is it all that necessary? But now, I've been in the office for, you know, with COVID, you know, seeing COVID patients for the last year and a half. And I think the one thing that I found that has convinced me that masks work is what I've seen in the office. We don't see illness in general. Strep throat, influenza, I saw one case of influenza this last year. And I see, you know, normally in a normal year, I see two or three a day during flu season. RSV, ear infections. I can count on my hand how many times I've prescribed antibiotics this last year. Barely at all. It's always remarkable when I, you know, it's a big deal when I see an ear infection. Whereas, you know, before, I diagnosed it two, two times a day, two or three times a day. So for me, you know, we feel that masks did play a role in that, in reducing those kinds of infections. So why wouldn't COVID be any different from those other illnesses? I'm really, we're really hopeful that, you know, with vaccine approval for kids who are under 12, you know, when that's underway, hopefully, we'll be able to get these down. And, you know, we could always reassess to see how things are going. Right now, we're seeing an increase in rates, and the kids haven't even gone back to school yet. They're not indoors yet, and we're seeing an increase. So that's, that's my perspective.
So public comment is over. Thank you, though. Continue.
That's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask if the committee has any questions for you?
Yes, please.
All right. We'll start with you, Mrs. Picard.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I know you said this, but I was hoping you could reiterate, and then I'm going to ask a clarifying question. You said, with ventilation and with masks, what was the rate of infection or the risk factor?
So, yeah, that's really good to bring up, because I'll make two more comments about that. So if, so this person in MIT calculated that if you wear a mask and there's ventilation in the room, in your standard classroom, the risk for eventually everyone in the room being at risk for getting COVID is roughly 80 hours. So in other words, if you spent 80 hours with somebody with COVID, with ventilation, with a mask, after eight hours, then you're at risk. If you wear no mask and no ventilation, about after an hour, there's risk.
You said 80, 8-0?
So 80.
8-0.
8-0.
Okay.
So I will make two comments about that as well. One is, imagine a nursing home where they don't move at all. That's, you know, 80 hours, you're done. That's why we're, it's so devastating in the nursing homes. All right? So it doesn't matter. Eventually, virus gets everywhere. The other thing that I should also remark on is, you know, I'm not the expert on this. I'm wondering if it's different, if the calculation is different with Delta. I don't know, so I can't really comment on that. But I do wonder a little bit, because that was based on, you know, the previous COVID, so to speak.
And so...
Mrs. Picard?
Yes, may I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay. So with ventilation and with a mask, it's 80 hours until all risk. With ventilation and without a mask, what is, did you say it was eight hours?
Roughly eight hours. So if, given your standard school day, it would make a difference.
And that's if one person in the room is COVID-positive, with or without symptoms, with or without arm knowledge, correct?
Right.
So if some students were masked and some students were not masked, and those unmasked students were a positive, then we're at the eight hours.
Correct.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. I have one more question about that. If I think of it again, I'll come back to it. But I want to go back to the same question I asked Ms. Barzak. You said in your presentation, we don't know who has COVID. Is there a reason, other than the time it takes, that we should not be considering routine COVID safety checks, which used to be called pool testing?
Can you ask that in a different way? I'm not really sure what you meant by that. Sorry. Or repeat the question.
So what we're saying is, if we don't know who has COVID, we have greater risk in the community, correct?
Yes.
And so if we were to do the routine COVID safety checks, which used to be called pool testing, we would have a greater knowledge of who has COVID, and therefore, we would have less risk. Is that correct?
I don't think so. So I think there's been, it's been tried in some of the towns for the pool testing. It hasn't been particularly effective. I probably couldn't comment on the reasoning why. It would, it might catch some cases, but I think there are probably better ways to do that.
So can you suggest ways that we could find out who had asymptomatic COVID?
Not really, no. Not really, no.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for now. I may think of my follow-up questions on the floor. Thank you, Dr. Chan.
Yep.
I just have a question regarding your summertime infections that you came across. Did you still have a low number in?
Yeah, the public comment is over. I do apologize.
I understand.
Thank you, though. I would like to remind everyone in the room, I would like to remind everyone in the room that we are supposed to be masked.
I do understand. But among educators, he's a physician.
Yep.
And I'm a nurse, so I'm asking a relevant medical question. Did you have a lower number in the summer as well, when everybody was not wearing masks, including kids?
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
Sure, go ahead. I, I'll say this. You can answer that when everyone in the room puts their mask on.
So we did, we saw.
Not yet, please.
We saw no cases in our, in our office.
I'm sorry. If you'd like to put a mask on at the back, that'd be great. If not, I'm going to ask you to leave. Thank you.
We saw no cases for about two months. And then there was talk of the Delta. Again, the, the thought was, what's, you know, is this a real thing? Looked like the percentages of, of COVID being Delta were rather low. But now it's, to us, it seems like, yeah, this, this is here. I think the, we don't test specifically for Delta, but we rely on public health to, to tell us, you know, what the percentage is. And I think it's rather high right now, right?
So we're still a test for Delta?
Not from a standard doctor's office, no.
So is that your question, that stuff, that downs well over the summer?
So once people got, you know, start, we started relaxing measures, we started seeing colds, RSV came back. It's unseasonal right now to see it in the summer, but we're seeing RSV, daycares are affected. You know, strep, I, I might be diagnosed three or four times this last, this last year. Yeah, and we've, you know, with some of the stories, again, these are stories, so I don't want to get too much into, you know, but, you know, a daycare in, in Wyndham had 30 cases and, you know, had 30 cases of COVID, and they had to shut down a couple of weeks ago. So this is what the parent told me. So again, we're doing the, you know.
It's anecdotal.
Yes, it is anecdotal. Yes.
Mrs. Petrowski, do you have questions?
Again, they have, they have different measures, they have different populations, they have different rates, so that should be definitely brought up. Yes.
There's been a question about the kinds of masks that should be used that are most effective. And I think, I'm just wondering what, you know, we've, we've, I've read and I've heard a few different people say, like, only the N95 masks are effective. What's your take on that? If we are asking students and staff to wear them, is this sufficient?
Yeah. That's a great question. So certainly, for me, what I do personally is I use an N95 when I see somebody who's sick, just because there's always the potential that could be COVID. That should not be applied to kids, of course. It's very uncomfortable. But the, there's information to show that, you know, wearing a mask, whether it be clothed or not, yes, wearing a cloth mask is less, is less effective than a surgical mask. But it's still some measure.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yeah, you may have mentioned that you're seeing now whole families are getting it, whereas before, only maybe a couple of family members.
Yep.
Are you seeing any of the kids spreading it to the parents?
So that is the thought now, that maybe the kids are now participating in the spread. Just because of the amount of virus we think is being spread, it's a thousand times more than the previous strain.
Thank you. I appreciate your perspective on all of this, too.
Sure. Okay. Mrs. Maylin?
Yeah, so, so we saw like surges, then it came down, like with the old COVID, we're not talking about the new Delta COVID. But suppose that, you know, we, we were to have some masks, and we look at the data, our local data, like Cheryl said, is the data we need to look at, not, you know, what's happening in Texas. I don't really care what's happening in Texas.
Yep.
But, so small children, let's say the numbers come down again. Pre-vaccine for small children. How would you feel about no masking then, if we had no local cases?
So there's a bunch of answer, the questions that need to be answered. One is, how effective is it going to be in kids? We're expected to be effective when it comes out. How sick do these kids really get? I just can't tell you. I mean, we know the original is like, okay, I think we counted, we counted all of our COVID cases, you know, during the winter. We had 400 cases in our office. One ICU admission, that, that person had a previous underlying condition. The rest were relatively good. A couple of teenagers that I personally took care of had carditis as a result of COVID. And we've got probably a dozen teenagers who can't smell still or taste.
And, and so that's, that's for something that you now have data on. But we don't have data on the Delta yet. So that's, that's what you're saying is?
It's just that we don't know enough. And, and what we do know is that for adults, it's more dangerous. It's more infectious and it's more dangerous. We just don't know if you can apply that to kids.
Right.
Just like for the vaccine for kids, it's not the same dose. You can't apply what you learn in adults to kids. Like, why don't they have one for kids? It's because you have to find, find the right dose. It's per, for size, yeah.
Okay. And you, have you any secret crystal ball on, do they stand with that stuff?
Oh, with regards to the vaccine? There's so many rumors, as early as October to as late as December. So I, I don't know.
Thank you.
Other questions? I just have one for you right now. We may, I may have some more later. Back in the springtime, you and your practice kind of put out some form of a letter or newsletter, a number, a good number of our students go to your practice as patients. And one of them was, you know, that we needed to stop the return, stop the remote learning, right? That we needed to come back into our buildings. The plan right now, as I think we all know, is five days a week, all students, no remote, any of that. And you are recommending, what, five days returning masked, correct?
Yes, that's what we're recommending.
Okay. So I just want, I mean, at, at one point in the year, it was, you know, the, the remote was no longer, you know, really working. You know, we are now looking at, at being back in five days with the recommendation for masks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fully pleased that everyone's going back five days a week. I think we, we had that discussion a while back, and I think everyone's in agreement now. Yes.
Okay. All right. And I'm just going to ask a follow-up to Cheryl. Based upon the Board of Health recommendations, that is yours as well, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So let's talk, thank you. I don't think we have any more questions for you right now. I'm going to turn it over to.
Dr. Chan?
Oh, you, you remembered. All right.
I remember my question.
All right. Little softer, Helen.
I'm sorry. So when we were talking about one person, I'm not on ventilation with masks, ventilation without masks, ventilation without masks was eight hours with one person who was COVID positive. Do you have any data on more than one person who's COVID positive?
You know, we could contact that person in MIT and see how that changes the formula. But, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I don't know.
I'm just thinking about the school day being about seven and a half hours long.
Yes.
And if we had two COVID positives, if eight goes to four, that's, that's a big difference. And then my follow-up question with regards to whole families that may be infected. Are you finding that there's a difference between families that have vaccinated adults and families that have unvaccinated adults?
Yes. So we've got a few cases, a few instances of families where teenage kids, two parents, one wants to vaccinate, the other one doesn't. So they tell their kids, you can do what you want. One kid gets vaccinated, the other one doesn't. So we've seen a couple of families where the vaccinated don't get COVID and the unvaccinated do. What we've also seen a couple of times where a family all gets infected regardless of vaccination status. Don't get a general sense yet of how sick they are. But, yes.
Thank you.
One other thing, just to kind of go back to your previous question, like if there are two or more kids. It stands to reason that if there's more than one kid, there's going to be more virus in the air. So I would think that would dramatically reduce the time. So, yeah.
Dr. Chan, I was concerned about the new NIH guidelines where they're recommending more frequent changes of masks. And kids wearing masks all day long, through snacks, putting them down, wearing them in the bathroom, touching them, shoving them in their pockets, on their desks, touching all the surfaces. They're reverting back to previous use of masks in healthcare settings, where we would be changing them more frequently after eating and after you touch them, you need to sanitize your hands. And then hand hygiene increases have been great in preventing all these infections, too. But what do you think about the schools having masks there for kids? Because I don't think these.
To distribute masks when they're in school? Like, say, we want you to use this type of mask?
Somewhere in the surgical mask, a clean.
Yeah. I think that's a, that's an interesting question. From, from me, what I've kind of observed is that, what was I going to say? Well, yeah.
Well, I, I, I know we are going to cover that in the presentation as well. So, okay.
I think, actually, one thing related to that is if Cheryl can comment, or, or Helen, who happens to be here as well, on what did you see last year? Were we, we did not see heavy spread in school with kids wearing masks all last year. And we were all psyched that we went back five days from going two days. We would have worn masks 25 hours a day to get kids in five days a week. So I'm wondering how that worked. Were you seeing the, the bathroom and the stuff that Jen's asking?
So I can say that. So we are, we have, as Cheryl mentioned earlier, so I'm the nurse at Atkinson School. And as Cheryl mentioned, we have a pretty strict hand hygiene throughout your.
Excuse me?
Yep.
Yes, Helen?
Go up to the mic.
Could the speaker go to the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Sorry, I should have asked.
So I really purposely did not want to come and speak tonight as a school employee. I wanted to speak about my concerns as a mom. But as somebody who was dealing with this all year in the schools with children ages six to 11, I feel like I do have a good opinion, like a, a good bulk of experience to talk about. I also want to say, full disclosure, that I just worked a week at the Summer Acceleration Academy in town where everybody was masked. And they're doing fine with it. Honestly, they're doing fine with it. So what we do is they get mask rates, they change their masks. If they forgot to bring a spare mask, I give them a mask. I go through lots of masks, and that's okay. If they're dirty, they change them. If they sneeze in them, they change them. And their hand hygiene is structured, and it's impressive. I think that we are not giving the elementary school kids enough credit.
Thank you. Okay. So Dr. Gilligan, can we talk about returning to school and what that looks like?
Yeah. So I think it's really important that masks are just one mitigation strategy. And I think the next few slides is key information on mitigation strategies and operations. And we're going to talk tonight about transportation, food services, the buildings, community programs. Also let folks know that, you know, we will post this tomorrow online, this presentation, as well as principals will be sending out additional information. So as we go to next slide, transportation, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Mealy.
So we're just going to review, give you as much information as we can as to what the start of school will look like. It's going to look a lot like it did at the end of the year. Masks will be one for all riders and drivers on buses. It's a federal law right now. The windows will remain open, and the buses will be disinfected at the end of the day. The buses will be running at full capacity, as they did at the end of the year. We'll be running our normal routes this year, which means we'll, that includes grade seven through 12. And they are going to be available, the routes will be available to you online by the 26th. And the link is on here. So if you click on this presentation when it's put on the website, you'll also have access to this link. We will be offering paid busing this year. Grades, that's grade seven to 12, and grades K to six who live between a half mile and two miles, they're eligible for paid busing. Anyone over two miles who's in grades K to six get free busing. And then the passes are going to be mailed. They were mailed last week. If you have not received it yet, please contact Lucy McCarthy. She's our transportation coordinator, and she will make sure you get it. Regarding food services, again, all lunches are going to be available free to all students for the whole year. A la carte options at the high school and middle school, and snack options at the elementary schools will be available to purchase at A B E C C in elementary. They'll only be available through the point-of-sale payments that you can put the money into your account online. NAMs in North Andover High School, you can do that or pay cash. And there's a link for those payments, for processing those as well, on this presentation. We will continue to use link, and I just say that because it won't be for a lot longer. So for right now, it's the same. But we are moving to a new point-of-sale software system that we rolled out in October. We have demoed it, and it's much more user-friendly and provide one-stop shopping for you. And more details will be sent out as this, as the year starts up, and obviously prior to October. Students will be eating in the cafeterias instead of classrooms this year. But we will continue to encourage the schools, especially the elementary schools, to utilize the tents. We were fortunate that instead of renting the tents, we bought the tents last year, and they stayed up all summer, and will continue to stay up, and will utilize them. It worked out great at the elementary schools. When the weather allows, and that's more often than not, the kids will go out. And our food services director purchased a machine that seals the tray that they carry lunch in. So it makes it, you know, dropping until they get it, and they can peel that away and open up their tray and, and have their lunch. So it makes it much more mobile for our students. And although you've heard a lot about it being difficult to hire staff, I'm happy to say that right now, our food services is currently fully staffed. At the buildings, this will sound familiar. Last year, we did air quality testing prior to school. We're doing it again. There are a couple of portable units that had their systems replaced. Those in particular will be air tested to ensure those units are operating properly. But also, we'll be doing rooms at every school, and that report will be available on our website. We will continue to change out the filters, even more so than really required, just to err on the side of caution. And we have had our engineers look at our systems, because not, you know, you hear a lot about the Marv 13 vates and, and different numbers. Not every unit can take the highest filter. And so we put the one that it can best stand in there without burning out, overheating. So we're continuing to do that. We will continue to sanitize. We got the sanitizing guns that our custodians go through at the end of the day and sanitize everything for the next day. And we'll continue that. We'll continue to optimize the space as much as possible, meaning we took a lot of furniture out of the classrooms. We haven't put it back in yet. We want to continue to allow the teachers to have as much space in their rooms as possible. And so we're going to continue and encourage that. PPE that was mentioned will be available and is available. Students are still welcome to bring their own, but we will have supplies available for those who do not. We'll continue to encourage hand washing and model it, and we'll, and sanitizing as we did last year. Each building will have school-specific protocols and plans. And just as a reminder, last year, at the middle school, the students stayed in place and the teachers did the moving. It will be back to the students doing the moving this year. So just so you know that if you have a middle school child. And we will continue to encourage windows open as we did last year. And, but change this year, lockers will be available for use, which will help with the size of the, of the weight in the backpacks that we saw last year.
That was terrible.
Community programs, just quickly, they will be providing before and after-school programs, and as of right now, we'll be providing enrichment programs. They were really curtailed last year, but we anticipate those up and running. And you can go on the website and see what's available. And you may have gotten a survey through our school messenger asking about adult education opportunities. The high school is a great opportunity, a great place that we might be able to offer adult education programs at the, in the evening. And so the survey is there to kind of understand what the need is or the, the demand is for what kind of courses people might like to, to see available. So it's still on our website if you want to go on that and, and participate in the survey and give us that information. And then Dr. Gilligan?
Yes. Start and dismissal times. We thought this was a really important one. A, because we had a schedule change at the high school that was brought before the committee last year. But B, if you recall, last year, we started the year off in a hybrid model, remote, and then in a hybrid model. And there were different models. And then the state came up with different mandates around structured learning time. And we had to adjust about the middle of the year and change times. So I think it's really important that everyone knows when school starts and when. So I think it's really important that everyone knows when school starts and when we drop off and pick up. And principals will be sending more information specific to the schools. But I would like to point out that the, you know, the high school's new schedule has a 7:40 a.m. start time with a 2:15 dismissal. And we have the early release times on there for the professional development days. And also, please note, the middle school at 7:40. The high school actually used to start three minutes later than the middle school under the old schedule, in 19 and 20. But it works out really well with the buses, because the drop-off at the middle school starts a little bit before that. So that's not a conflict there. And elementary is back at their regular scheduled program, along with kindergarten, their regularly scheduled programming. And we'll be sending out information from the preschool. The preschool has a pretty complicated schedule, because they have some folks that go half-day, full-day, certain days, depending on need and placement and programming. Next slide, Dr. Mealy.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yep.
One of the early dismissal times for elementary, I think, is incorrect. It was like the half-day for, do I have not an updated one? Oh, sorry. Okay. That was, got it. Sorry.
And then technology and Chromebooks. So, you know, it was really critical. It was just a few years back. We didn't have a ton of technology or infrastructure here in the community, and that's one of the things Partner, one of the town, we've been able to do, and provide a Chromebook for every student. So, you know, we'll send this information out, but for every new student that does not have a district-issued Chromebook, we will have them for them the first week of school in their homerooms for them to have. And if you go to the next slide, Dr. Mealy. Fall extracurricular activities. So, you know, we're talking about athletics, visual, and performing arts, the different clubs, et cetera. As we know, there were really heavy restrictions last year that were relaxed at the end of the year. But at this time, all extracurricular performing arts and athletic restrictions have been relaxed. We will still monitor the situation and watch it very closely. Coaches, directors, club leaders will continue to mitigate as much as reasonable in order to ensure continuous participation. NAMs will require masks, be worn on the buses. Again, that's a federal law. And by all indoor co-curricular participants and spectators when inside our school buildings. We're going to start out with the locker rooms open at the beginning of the year. And as a conference, some conferences have made decisions, this is about high school athletics, around similar rules across. The MVC hasn't come to any rule around that. But the home outdoor activities, spectators are welcome, and masks are not required outdoors. The home indoor activities, spectators are welcome, but the masks are required. So for, you know, for example, there's one, I believe we have one fall sport that is indoors, and that would be volleyball. And then away activities, we'll have to comply with the rules in place for that school district that we're visiting, where the visiting participant in programming. And this will be something that we keep an eye on and have to watch very closely.
All right. Ms. Picard, do you have any questions on the return-to-school plan for either Dr. Mealy or Dr. Gilligan?
Yes, I do. First, my question about transportation. We're having paid busing this year, and that includes kids who are one-half mile to two miles away from school. And I'm wondering if there's a process, I believe that there is, for low-income students and families to get that busing, either at reduced rate or however that works. Can you just review that with me, please?
Yes, I'm glad you asked. So, parents can choose, we do our eligibility through food services, whether you're eligible for free and reduced. And at that time when you're applying, you can indicate that that information can be shared with community programs, transportation, and?
Athletics.
Athletics, thank you. But if you don't choose that, it can't be shared. But if you feel you are eligible, you still can let the food services department know that you now want them to share that information with whatever it is you are looking for the reduced fee, in this case, transportation.
So we are collecting applications for free and reduced lunch, even though meals are free for all students this year?
So the process has changed in that there are now three lists that go to our food services director. And students who are automatic, who are on any one of those lists are automatically eligible for free and reduced. And a family, if they are not eligible in that way, can fill out an application.
And I know last year's, anybody 18 and under was eligible for free food from the schools, whether or not they were enrolled in schools. Is that still the case?
While everyone is now eligible for free lunch, all of our students, they're still tracking the eligibility on free and reduced.
But if a student were, I'm sorry, I don't know why that just got loud and echoey. If a student were not enrolled in our schools, say a family was homeschooling, last year they were eligible to pick up free meals for children, is that still the case? Or if a family is homeschooling, can they not have free school lunch?
Yeah, that would be on a, I'll have to check with our director of food service. I know we're not delivering meals to the community like we did last year, but I'll have to check on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
And then with regards to NAMs, you said that the students will be changing classrooms rather than having the teacher change classrooms. My experience at NAMs was that my students would be remixed with a variety of classmates through the day, so they might have a certain group of students in English class and a different group of students in social studies and a different group of students in math. Are these groups that are moving cohorting groups, or are they completely mixed-up groups?
The middle school will be moving, and they will be parts of the teams. And I will check, the principal will be sending out more information about cohorts. But we plan to operate school, remember, schools across Massachusetts are bringing back 10 to 30% of the kids that were out. So we are going back to more traditional-style schools, so kids will be moving to different classes.
And so those sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students will be exposed not to just 25 students, but potentially up to 100 students on their team, for example?
The possibility of the change, yeah, when you change classes.
Okay.
And Mrs. Picard, just very quickly, I think that's a benefit of the test-and-stay implementation.
It may well be. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I'm assuming no. Ms. Strawski?
She waved no.
I can't see.
She waved no.
It's a bad angle, sorry.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify, and I apologize if this has already been said and I missed it, but are we, oh, sorry, are we not mandating or enforcing a three-feet distance anywhere?
No, there are no restrictions right now by the Commonwealth, but they're our best practices. And that's what we were talking, I think, when we had the COVID Task Force up, is we're going to do our best to maintain maximum physical distancing in our classes and keep students at a minimum of three feet. And if we can keep them at a minimum of three feet apart during class, that will minimize our need for contact tracing and testing in the test-and-stay program. So we will, to the extent possible, spread kids out, use outdoor spaces as much as possible, and use any available space.
Okay. And then, this kind of sounds like a silly question, but I'm thinking of our primary grades and setups and rugs. Are they being used in classrooms? And if they are, how are they, do they need to be sanitized, and how would that happen? And I don't know if that's relevant at this point or not.
They are in our elementary rooms, but they're sanitized every night.
Okay. All right. I just wasn't sure, because I know hard surfaces are a lot easier. And then I was just kind of brainstorming and thinking, you know, as we are moving into setting up classrooms, and I don't know who can answer this or whatever, but I just kind of want to throw it out there, if we can get a little bit creative, is there, would there be an option to cluster some desks together? You know, if you had like three desks and a student in the middle on one side, and then on the other side, alter them, and then put Lexi glass in the middle? Would they be able to remove their masks to have conversations facing each other? Just kind of trying to brainstorm some thoughts, and I don't know if that's the right time to do this, but it just kind of popped in, and I thought, we've got some people here who might be able to answer that question.
Yeah, some really great ideas, you know, but right now, with the restrictions, we're bringing back everybody, you know, and having the kids back, we're going to do our best to keep them at three feet. So, you know, the configuration may look, you know, different, but it would be three feet is the distance that we're striving for. Less than three feet would, you know, could require contact tracing, what would require. And that's also the benefit of the test-and-stay, to be able to keep kids in school who may have become a close contact during an activity or at school. So I, that may be a better, that may be a better question for our COVID Task Force on the shields, but, you know, the mitigation strategies and the operations have been around the hygiene, air ventilation, all those different pieces.
Yeah.
All right. Mrs. Lynch?
Yeah, so I just have a question. If a student is positive and has to stay home, what is the length of time the student has to be out of school? And is, are there any accommodations for that student, or is it just like being out sick and makes up the work when he or she comes back?
I'd have to bring the COVID Task Force up, because it could depend on what day, and, you know, they could have been out.
Ten days for college.
Ten days, up to, yes. And, you know, just like any other time we're sick, now we have all of our class, and the reality is, there is no more remote learning in the Commonwealth. We have all of our kids in front of us. So, you know, we would treat this the way we do, and it's different at different levels of, you know, working with people to do the makeup work, get them work, reach out and provide assistance as needed. It's much like being out. And I think that's really the key, one of the key strategies out of the two, out of the three, is the testing, symptomatic testing, and the test-and-stay. And, you know, that's why the state has put that in, as a result of eliminating the physical distancing and bringing everyone back. But we're going to maximize as much distance as we can, and we believe we're going to do a really good job with that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mayble?
So, going off of what Ms. Wieske just brought up, the key thing that keeps coming back to me, especially when we're talking about at what point we might be able to relax and remove masks and things like that, I think a huge tool that we have lost through with that is the complete opposite of what we put in place. So we have all this technology, you just said, every kid's going to have that. So then we get, we say we get rid of some masks, we get an outbreak. That means, let's say, kids have to be out for two weeks, and they feel okay, but they have to be out. We have to wait and make that up in June, is that correct? Or make it up?
Well, if you're asking if I had to close school, like, remember last year, an example would be Franklin School, we had to shut down, I believe, two days before the winter recess. You couldn't make those up with remote learning. Those would have to be made up just like a snow day.
So, to me, that's the more outrageous thing, is we have all this technology, these opportunities, I think we should be fighting so that we can make that, switch to, again, not if it's across, switch to remote learning for that classroom, rather than shutting down a whole school or what have you, and not break apart the learning, since we have all this technology, and unfortunately, we have a lot of skills at this point. The only bad part is, parents who are working will then have to make arrangements. But I think we need to go up against why we can't do that if we have the skills and the technology.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think the challenge is that during the '21-'22 school year, the full-time remote learning programs don't, do not count for destruction.
Right. That's what I want to fight about, I guess.
And the other part is, we brought back all the 10, you know, for us, it was about 10% back to full in-person last year, you know, starting April 5th with the elementary. You know, and now we're going to have a staff member, a teacher, with all of the class at that time.
I just mean that if a whole class, or a whole school, or a whole grade had to go out, is there no way we can plead, like, just do the remote and then ask for credit?
Superintendent Tab has been in touch with their opinions and feelings with the commissioner on that.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions from the committee? I think the last comment.
Ms. McDevitt?
Yep.
Following up on what Ms. Mayble and Ms. Wieske Lynch just asked, this spring, when we were all full in-person, and it was no longer acceptable to have, you know, fully remote learning or hybrid learning, if we did have students that were out, we did include them in certain ways in the classroom. So as an elementary school student, if I recall correctly, if there was a read aloud, that read aloud would be broadcast to the child at home. I think we really need to think about and talk about those sorts of options if we start to have students staying at home with positive COVID status. It's not about the whole school district being remote, but about servicing those children.
All right. I do not have any questions right now. I think Dr. Gilligan and Mealy and Mrs. Marks and I spent enough time walking through some of this. I do feel like, as a school year, traditional school year, this is almost back to 2019-20, 2019-2020, until probably early March. Okay. All right. So we will move on next to our agenda, which is discussion regarding protocols for face coverings and policy review. I would just like to remind the committee and the audience that at this point right now, effective June 24, we rescinded the policy, and there's a no-mask policy in place today.
And Mr. McDevitt, just for some context, just for some context on that, we did rescind it. You know, the state recommended and encouraged it over the summer. It was not mandated. North Andover looked at their local numbers and made the decision to not require masks. You could wear them if you want, some chose to in some of the summer programming, and some chose not to. But I think it's really important, over the summer, that we scheduled this meeting for this date, knowing that, you know, we wanted to have the most up-to-date information, and that the, you know, the different recommendations have come out over the summer. You know, on July 19, it was the American, the Academy of Pediatrics. And then July 27, the CDC, you know, suggested a return to masks. Then July 30, you know, the mask DESE, they didn't mandate it, but they made strong recommendations and new guidance. And as you saw probably locally in the newspapers in different places, until Friday, districts were voting individually on mask policies. And then, obviously, this past Friday, the town manager issued a municipal buildings mask requirement. And then on Friday, the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley from DESE, contacted us early in the morning, said we had a call, and that he was going to go to his board, which he did, and they voted today, to give him the power to mandate a mask policy. And that's what he was doing. So that's through the Commonwealth, and I think that that's just some context.
Can you just explain quickly the definition of a mandate coming down from DESI? And I know Town Council is here as well, so I don't know if she can help with that or help explain it?
So what we have from DESI is that they have given the Commissioner the authority to require masks in all schools. And so there's language regarding mandate, but really what the language is, is that they're requiring masks in all schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And this pink part here is what just you put in this morning from that?
Yes, so, so, yes, so this face covering policy has been updated to reflect that vote of the Commission, that this is in response to that vote?
And this is the policy that we took away back in June?
It is. It's the exact same policy.
I also think it's important to note that the Board of Education today in their vote gave the Commissioner the authority to require masks for students five and above, K through 12, through October 1. So at that time, it appears DESE will review the information and data at that time.
Not for young people. Not for under 12.
For everyone, K to 12.
It's vaccinated.
They have other recommendations.
They're vaccinated.
Correct, yeah.
So, under 12 will not be reviewed.
Yeah, that's what they've indicated. That was the first slide. We talked about how they were going to do a review. So thank you for that clarification around. So thank you for that clarification around, I didn't believe you used 80%, so.
But indefinitely for under 12. I just want to make that clear, right?
As this stands right now, all grades through at least October 1st, 2021, I recognize you probably can't read from the back, sorry about the screen, all grades. So is there a motion?
I have a question, I'll make a motion to accept the face covering policy as presented on the screen.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Picard, is there a second?
Second, second.
Okay, Mrs. Mayble. Okay, so discussion. So I will start, I think you said, Mrs. Picard, that you had a question, so I will start with you in terms of questions and clarifications.
Yeah, so this is the first time I've seen, well, now I can't see it all. So that document hasn't been provided to me, so I haven't been able to review it. I did review file EBCFA that was previously in place. So, and before I can really go on this, I'm really need to read it and think for a few moments. And I'm disappointed that this wasn't provided to me in some manner before now. I understand that everybody's been working very hard and that this just changed today. But I certainly had time between the end of my workday and the beginning of this meeting that I would have read this document. I also wonder if this document, if the one that I had provided to me, EBCFA, is exactly what we did in June, or if it was updated with the MASC-recommended face covering's policy that was sent out in August? I'm just trying to compare these three documents that I don't have access to all of.
The change that's on the screen, Ms. Picard, that's in pink, simply inserts the language that DESI voted on today.
Okay.
And then there are a couple of line-outs that Suzanne made about the superintendent, you know, the, just crossed off a couple of things, and the super, the school district's policies will also change, and the superintendent shall implement face coverings as required, protocols as required. So it's just dropped in what was issued today, or what was recommended today by CDC or voted on.
So right now I can see one paragraph, and the document that I'm looking at that was provided to me is two pages.
Yet nothing else has changed.
So that's a two-page document, the same as I have, except for the pink information was added.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification. I just couldn't know because I can't see it other than what's being told right now. So I appreciate that being done, and I appreciate everything that people are doing, but I just needed to understand what we're looking at and what we're going to be voting on.
Helen, Helen, this was in the folder that came to us from Michelle before the meeting this afternoon.
The folder that came to us from Michelle did not have the pink data. I'm looking at it right now. And Michelle's email also said it did not have the pink data, but that would be provided tonight. So I'm just trying to understand that, thank you very much. I'm done.
Mr. Petrowski, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions right now.
Mrs. Lynch?
No questions.
Mrs. Mayble?
So yes, I do. It says that this is all grades, at least through October 1st. Does it speak to about what, after October 1st, what are options out? Like are we allowed to use our local data, et cetera, to make changes to this after October 1st? And say, based on the 80% fractionation rate or what have you, are those hard and fast data points from, as far as we know, or we have to wait to hear what Jeff Riley says tomorrow?
Well, in his latest press release, Jeff Riley got the authority to mandate masks for all K to 12 public school students and staff through October 1st. After October 1st, the Commission is, will, would, policy would allow a review of middle and high schools to lift the mask mandate for vaccinated students and staff, only if the school meets a certain vaccination rate. In the press release from yesterday, it was 80% of students and staff in a building are vaccinated, unvaccinated, and staff would still, unvaccinated students, excuse me, and staff would still be required to wear masks. So that's what he'd be reviewing, and that's what he has said at this time.
And so that's what I think Ms. Barzac was saying, is that's the kind of the hard work to be done, is if we add 80%, and that would be great or whatever, we could lift masks where we had the vaccination levels of 80% or more, we still would have to, you still would require kids who are not vaccinated, or students or teachers who are not vaccinated, or employees who are not vaccinated, to wear a mask. And how would you possibly control that? That's a huge problem.
So my understanding of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Gilligan, is unless the vaccine becomes available to sixth graders who are turning 12, which it will be starting, the high school would be the only school at this point that would be possible to hit that. They would have to hit 80%, including faculty, staff, that includes cafeteria, custodians, teachers, assistants administration. However, anybody who is unvaccinated must, can't speak, must remain masked.
And that's.
Is that correct? Are you? Yes, okay, sorry.
And that's where the challenge is, I mean, obviously, that's, that's October 1st, we have to figure that out, but that's the hard thing to figure out, is how on earth would you enforce that?
Yep. So, so. So, so.
Right, so, and I think there are ways that you can get.
Dr. Gilligan, could you just scroll down to the bottom of this, because this actually is my question to a degree?
Yep.
Who's presenting, I'm sorry? I'm sorry, Dr. Mealy, I looked at you and called you Dr. Gilligan, sorry. I really apologize. Could you scroll, sorry.
No offense taken.
Scroll to the bottom, please. So I can't see entirely here, but as I see in my packet, there is a section that says, "In addition, masks or face coverings," is that on the screen? I apologize for the angle.
Oh, it's right after the bulleted stuff, yeah.
Yeah, "in addition."
Right there.
Three bullets, and then "in addition."
I don't see "in addition," oh, oh, before the bullets.
Nope, after these bullets, keep going, right there.
Got it.
Okay, all right, so I'm just going to read this because I think it's important as we consider, and I think people in the back maybe not be able to see it. "In addition, masks or face coverings will not be required for anyone who has a medical, behavioral, or other challenge making it unsafe to wear a mask," I'm sorry, "face mask or face covering. A written note from a physician is required for a requested exemption. Parents may not excuse their child from the face mask requirement by signing a waiver." So I think that does answer a question that I did hear. The next line is a question that I don't underst, or a statement I don't understand. Says additionally, "Face masks or face coverings will not be required."
Next page, we'll put it over.
Ah, sorry.
During mask breaks or while eating or drinking.
I don't have that, I don't have that in my packet.
Oh, I do. It says during mask breaks or while eating or drinking. It's just what, it was basically what was in place when we came back.
Or eating or drinking, okay, thank you.
In April, when we allowed outside no masks, remember when that happened?
Okay, perfect, okay, just missing on my packet here.
Students are not required to wear masks when outside for recess, physical education, youth sports, or, and outdoor learning. So I was going to say, Pam, like in your case, where you want to have a group of four kids look at each other and do an activity, you want them to the tent, right?
Okay, so with this, the only exemption is from a physician, for a medical condition.
What about medical 504s? I sound like a medical 504.
I'm going to assume that there would be a note from a physician. So I'm going to, any other questions from the committee?
Yes.
Mrs. Picard?
My understanding from reading this is that you need a note from a physician, and it's reviewed by someone in the school to approve it. Exemptions to this policy in certain circumstances such as students with medical behavioral other challenges and who are unable to wear masks must be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse or the local board of health.
That's how it went last year.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it's, so it's a two, it's a two-part process, the note from the physician and then an approval of that from the school principal or the nurse.
I'm going to ask you to pause for a fast second, Mrs. Mayble?
So as related to that, I'm wondering if Ms. Barzac or Dr. Chan could mention, did you have, I mean, you'd have to come on, I guess, did you have a lot of those that you had to work with last year?
I wrote no notes for exemptions.
We, we had no medical exemptions.
So there were no requests and no notes that you had to reject or accept or anything? So last year, right, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Does that, does that help, Ms. Picard?
It, it does, I, I have a couple of other things that I wanted to mention. In paragraph two, it says students are exempt outdoors, it doesn't mention adults. We, I think changed the policy in spring so that adults did not have to wear masks outdoors. So I'm, I'm, I will be looking to make an amendment that outdoor, neither students nor adults need to wear masks.
So it would read, "Students and adults are exempt from wearing face coverings outdoors on school grounds," is that what you're saying?
Yes, is that paragraph two?
Yes.
Yep.
Last, last sentence is.
Yes.
Suzanne, do you have any? That's fine, good. I wrote that note.
So if I, that I need to move that amendment, and then I'll have more to do. So I need to move that amendment, but I guess it would need a second.
Second?
Okay, are we going to vote on just that change? Is that correct?
Correct, correct, that's the arbitral's order.
I know, all right, so we could be here for a while. So Helen and Amy, all right, so we are voting only on whether or not students and exempt, and adults are exempt from wearing face coverings outdoors on school grounds, second paragraph. Want to do a roll call, Mrs. Picard?
Do you want to have discussion first?
Uh, sure, discussion.
I don't have anything to discuss.
Okay, Mrs. Picard, oh, sorry.
No discussion from me.
Any discussion?
No, but good catch, thank you.
All right. Holly, Amy?
At minor point, I would just recommend individuals instead of students and adults, just in case you have a younger sibling who's not technically a student, or, but I'm fine with it if you want to keep it.
I accept that as a priority in my life.
All right, students and individuals.
Or just individuals.
Individuals, all right, so we're rolling that all back, all right, thank you.
So I now have, individuals are exempt from wearing face coverings outdoors on school grounds.
All right, this is the fun, guys. All right, so roll call vote, Mrs. Picard?
Yes.
Mrs. Petrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayble?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so 5-0 on that. All right, so next, Mrs. Picard.
Okay, if we look down at paragraph seven, it also says, "Students are not required to wear masks when outdoors for recess, physical education, youth sports, and outdoor learning." So again, I would move that that be changed from students to individuals.
Can we get all the edits and make it worse?
Yeah, can we, can we do all of it once?
Well, okay, but I have questions about that one as well, and it might have to do with the Oxford comma. What I, what I'm not certain about, it says, "Students are not required to wear masks when outdoors for recess, physical education, youth sports." If they are indoors for physical education, are they required to wear a mask? Or are they not required to wear a mask during physical education?
How about when outdoors for the following, colon, recess, physical education, youth sports, and outdoor learning, would that take care of it?
That would, and I, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult, I just want to make sure that we're buttoning it up so that there aren't confusions.
Individuals are not required to wear masks when outdoors for the following.
But didn't we just recover it in the previous edit by saying it's not required outdoors?
We did.
We, we did, we're just.
So we could strike that whole section, but I think it's important.
I think it helps to articulate it all out personally, because then there's no questions, and it's already here. I would just add the following.
It's double covered, okay. Next?
So then we need, then we need that amendment. I'm, I'm done, I'm done.
You're done, okay, all right. So that amendment is there, is there, so you're making that, is there a second on that?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayble? All right, any discussion? Okay, Mrs. Picard?
Yes.
Mrs. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Vitsky Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayble?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, 5-0 on that. Okay, so now the policy as it stands. Continued discussion.
I'm done.
Okay. Mr. Petrowski?
I think we've said everything that we can say and ask questions, ask, I can't think of anything else. The only thing I'm worried about is, oh, no, this is, yeah, no, I'm good, thank you.
It's already.
No questions.
No questions? No questions?
No questions.
All right. So I'm just going to ask for a point of clarification, Dr. Gilligan and maybe Town Council Egan. The Board has given Commissioner Riley this authority. If he does not act on it, and we enact this policy, what happens? Sorry.
So this, this policy provides that, the, the first paragraph essentially gives the reasoning behind adopting the face mask policy. If he does not recommend it, this face policy would still be in place. It would still be the required to have face coverings in the school system.
I couldn't hear you, could you say that again? I'm sorry, Suzanne.
The face coverings policy would still be in effect, even if the Commissioner does not recommend it, yes, so this is still going to be effective. That first paragraph is to give context to the policy.
And it doesn't expire until we remove it, revoke it, or whatever that language is that we used before, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
School policies will also change, the superintendent's show, okay. All right, I have no other questions. Any other questions from the committee? All right, so there was a motion on the floor for policy as presented and modified of EBCFA. I'll call for a roll call vote. Mrs. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Vitsky Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayble?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, 5-0. Okay. All righty. Okay, so we will move on to our next item of business. Dr. Mealy?
So the next item is school capacity project, and this is going to be a permanent agenda item for the year. Just as a reminder, we have some very large school projects as part of master, facility master plan phase two, that will be coming, more details will be coming. We've generated a recommendation to the school committee, and in the second meeting in September, the school committee will be voting on that recommendation, and then we'll be doing some community outreach to help explain the project and gather support as we move towards town meeting in May. So this is just a reminder of that, a lot of information is available on our website. If you just click on the school capacity heading, you can see all the information, all the work that's been done so far. But this is just kind of a, the first time it's on the agenda, but will be on every agenda until May town meeting.
All right, Dr. Gilligan?
All right, so superintendent's report, and we have a couple of updates today. I want to say that it's been really tremendous. I have to give big shout out to Rick Gorman up at the Youth Center and Summer Fun. Tons of our kids participated, and also a boatload of our kids worked there. So that was awesome, some awesome summer programming. I'm thrilled that we've had such an awesome participation in our extended school year for students on IEPs that required summer programming, and our Acceleration Academies that are in place. It's been a blast to see, it's been great to see kids learning, and I'd let Ms. Marks talk a little bit about Acceleration Academy.
Good evening, it's been a long night. Our Acceleration Academy ran last week and is running this week, and the point of that was to take our, start with our highest risk students, as identified by data that we had, testing data, and allow them to, the opportunity to come into school and receive instruction in a very targeted area, as well as some social emotional reports, support, and supports around just advocating for themselves as they come back into school. And it's been really successful, the kids have been, I was there yesterday and today in the two different level programs, and the kids are really excited, there are a lot of. and, um, the kids are really excited, there are a lot of quotes and comments that were given to me. One of the students talked about learning in just a couple of days, what he felt it took him four months to learn in math. The studies show that the math skills, although they look like they fell further behind, are gonna be made up quicker than the literacy skills, and we're seeing that even in the acceleration academy with the little, the younger kids, the primary kids learning to read. We're definitely gonna have our work cut out for us as we get those students back into school. So we had just about two hundred, just under two hundred each week in the rising first graders through eighth graders at Atkinson School. The high school numbers really varied, and that was a combination of programs, we had acceleration academy, we had a math class for students who are going to, um, jump into a different trajectory. Um, we changed the math trajectory at the high school, so just some additional support there. And also some credit recovery, um, obviously, a lot of students struggled with the remote learning, and some students did not achieve the credits that they hoped to, so we have students in credit recovery. When I was there today, there was one student who was not signed up for week two, who asked to come for week two to make up more credits, which was a really positive thing. Students were working really hard, and they stated that they felt that it's really been helpful for them to be able to come. There was a elementary student who had been in Ola all year, and also talked about just her experience being able to come back into a school building, what that felt like, be with kids again, and to be prepared for that coming into the school year. And I just wanted to say a big thank you to, we had two directors, one at the high school level and one at the K through eight level. Jill Reivenberg, who was a, uh, teacher at Atkinson School, and then Caitlin Flanagan, who's a teacher at the high school. They have coordinated these programs, they've done an outstanding job. And our coaches at the elementary into, um, early middle school literacy coaches and some of our math coaches have worked individually with these teachers, and they've really done an outstanding job. So this is a new project for us, and, um, I think it's gone well, there's certainly some things that we didn't expect from, you know, the traditional first day of school bus route issues. Today, one of the buses broke down going to the high school, so those are the kind of things you deal with. And also just kind of getting a, a different look at the data, and, um, some of that was a little different than we expected based on the end of the year data. So, when we did some pre-testing, when kids came back in, but it's good information for us. We've had fabulous teachers, positive attitude, it was just, it was a highlight of my day both days to be able to go over and spend some time with kids in the school and see what's happening, so.
Thank you.
Alright, and Dr. Mealy? If you could give us an update on, uh, summer, um, some of the hiring we've done to tackle unfinished learning?
So if you recall, we got $2.6 million from the town for recovery services, and presented the positions that we would like to hire, uh, and here, here's the update on, on that. ABECC reading interventionist has been hired, three elementary coaches, two have been hired, and one has been offered. Uh, we're waiting to have that offer accepted. The math director for K to eight has been hired. Uh, the six responsive classroom facilitators are actually staff that will, um, add that role, uh, have been selected and accepted. Social worker has been hired, the elementary interventionist, five and a half of those, 5.5 FTEs, have been hired. Two classroom teachers have been hired, an EL teacher at the elementary level has been hired. Middle school coaches and interventionists, two, have been hired. Uh, the middle school related arts position, uh, the funds for that's been reallocated to other positions for two reasons. One, the middle school decided that that wasn't going to really benefit, have a benefit for all students, it was only going to be the particular classes that would be reduced for a particular group. And, and that, uh, those funds have also allowed us to hire people into the other positions, because some of them were coming in a little bit higher than what we had projected, so it's allowed us to get good people into those positions. So, it's worked out. The middle school social worker has been hired, the middle school ETL has been hired, the two high school teachers have been hired, the high school social worker, the high school ETL, and the high school psychologist have all been hired. Employee benefits, if you recall, we set aside $15,000 for each of these FTEs who are eligible for, um, health insurance. So we set aside the money to cover that. We'll be tracking that as we go, because not all of them will choose it, and so if they don't all choose it, and we don't have, it doesn't cost us $367,500, we could use that for something else.
How soon do they tell you?
We'll find out within the next...
When they enroll, kinda?
Right, they need to enroll when they get hired, and so, we'll have a pretty good sense in a week or two.
Thanks.
Yep. And then regarding curriculum resources, the, um, GOs have been ordered, the pre-K literacy programs, including Scholastic, Hegarty, and Foundations, and updated materials for our English learners have all been purchased. And then professional development, the BC Data Coach, uh, the Mass General Hospital has been introduced to do early literacy, UDL PD throughout the year, and, and opening day keynote speaker. Uh, and then SEL director has attended a responsive classroom training. So, there's still, that's not all of those funds, so there's still, um, funds available for, for some more as well. But, um, it's all been accounted for, so far. And regarding SOR two, which is the second of three grants that we have been awarded, uh, we're, well, awarded. SOR three, we're in the process of applying for, but SOR two, we have already received, and that included instructional professional salaries, that's, uh, money to pay for those teaching the acceleration academy that Ms. Marks was just talking about, classroom teachers, specialists, part-time BCBA, and, um, mental health services. Support staff salaries, that includes the bilingual parent liaison, acceleration academy support staff, and TAs. Stipends are, uh, made available to our health support staff, acceleration academy, and SEL coaches. Contracted services, that's a consultant for special education. Supplies and materials, we were able to use these funds to put air conditioners in at Atkinson, because Atkinson is where the accelerated academy is being held over the summer, so it was justified, uh, to use these funds to put the air conditioners in. We've also been able to replace carpet with tile, uh, for better air quality, and, uh, some water fill units. If you've been to any of our schools, you may have seen the, what we would call a bubbler, we've been replacing those with the bottle fill coolers, and so we've done some more of those. There was, uh, some funds available for the transportation for the acceleration academy, and then we're required to, in any grant that we pay salaries from, to cover, uh, the retirement contribution for that salary, and so that's in there as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mealy, that's it for the superintendent's report tonight.
Alright. Alright, uh, for the chair, I'm just gonna go, um...
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes, sorry.
Do we have time?
Oh, yes, sorry, sorry.
For questions?
Yep, do you have a question, Mrs. Picard?
I have a couple. Um, starting with, um, Ms. Marks. You said the acceleration academy was for those students at the highest risk, as provided by the data. We've been talking a lot about COVID risk tonight, can you please define what the highest risk students were that were included in the acceleration academy?
It was based on, um, testing data and looking at who fell in the lowest percentages. We started with those invitations and then moved on up. We had some parents request, even if a sibling, um, may not have fallen in that sort of data range, could they come, and we accepted siblings in. We had other families that requested, um, students to come, and I think we were able to take, as far as I know, everybody who requested, 'cause not all the students who were in sort of that lowest percentage, um, range were interested in coming, or parents were interested in having them come at that point. Some of them were saturated by the school year that they had had, so.
Okay, so we're talking about students with the highest academic risk?
Yes.
Um, for the acceleration academy. And do you have the numbers of how many students you invited, um, in order to get up to that 200-person engagement?
I don't have them in front of me, but I can certainly get them.
I would love to know that at some point. And again, uh, Mr. McDevitt, um, it would be helpful to have documents attached whenever possible, um, you know, the, the financial information that, um, Dr. Mealy just provided to us. I would have liked the opportunity to review that in advance, so I might be able to form questions if I have any. It's just too quick and too late at night for me to be able to process all that, thank you.
Okay. Duly noted. Ms. Petrowski, any questions for Dr. Mealy? Or Mrs. Marks, sorry?
No, well, just a, like a, a slight one, and I'm just wondering, um, I think we were just actually talking about earlier the, where we all have these Chromebooks now, and we have the option to not have to use outdated textbooks, but some of the curriculum hasn't been available online, so where are we standing with that? Like, I know some of the textbooks, we have hard copies, but what kind of subscriptions do we have for, um, online curriculum, just to make it, you know, streamlined for staff and students?
Yeah, so there are online resources that we use to teach to the standards, Ms. Marks, if you want to mention?
Yeah, so, um, different, different curriculums have different, um, availability, like we were talking about. So a number of the, the curriculums that we use do have some online availability, um, access, not only for students, but also for some PD for teachers, so for example, the Hegarty program, which we've instituted in our primary grades, which teaches phonemic awareness, that's a new piece that we've brought in, based on some of the science of reading research. That also has PD options, we have, we purchased some, um, video options for the teachers. We also provided PD for them through Hegarty, um, last January, we'll continue to do that. Foundations has the Fun Hub, which also has online, um, access. Uh, we have math programs, we used Zern last year, which has an online piece, so I could go on and on, I won't go through all of them, but we do have a number of programs that have, um, an online access, so.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lynch?
No questions.
Um, Ms. Picard covered all mine except for one, uh, Dr. Mealy, the SOR three, or, when does that, like, when do we get to spend that, if we get it?
Well, the application is due October 4th.
Okay, and then it would come, they tell you right away, or they tell you next Oc, next?
They've been pretty quick.
It happens pretty quickly.
Great, thank you.
And no questions from it. Alright, so, uh, we're gonna go onto the chair's report, which is basically the school committee meeting dates, which were published out. We publish them only, uh, just as a reminder, through budget season, which is why we kind of stop at the, uh, February 17th mark. Um, at that point, we kind of reassess those dates, but it's important to kind of lock those in, because some of those are, uh, well, they're all public meetings, but we have, uh, public hearings, uh, in January, and so it's important to just, uh, make sure we're all available. So, any conflicts or challenges? I think, Mrs. Picard, you mentioned one or two, I don't know if anyone else in the committee had any.
I just can't go the 30th, that's my, my opening day.
Oh, which month, oh.
August, so...
August, sorry, August 30th, the opening day.
So, yep, let me make a quick clarification on that. So that is the opening day for, uh, school, and so we are invited, uh, for teachers, I should say, faculty and staff, and so, uh, we are always invited to attend the opening, um, to, to see the staff. It's, there is actually no meeting, um, but because we are gathered, uh, we, we publish that as just a, um, that we will be together. In, in some years, we've had two or three people, and other years, I think we've had five or one, I mean, it just, it honestly can vary. But we will publish that as an official meeting date in case three or more of us are gathered. Okay?
One comment, that, I'm guessing February 17th is in red, 'cause that's school vacation. I would request we don't do school vacation week.
I was going to ask why it was in red.
Yeah, I'm guessing that's why, 'cause I just looked it up.
I...
And it's also Ash Wednesday, which is religious for some.
Yeah, I don't remember why that was in red.
Oh, why, February 17th is a Wednesday, so maybe that's...
I think that's why it's in red.
Stop, I'm looking at this here, never mind.
Okay.
I take it back.
So is that a Thursday?
Yes, and it's, it's not school commi, it's not, um, school vacation, never mind.
It's not school vacation, alright, okay.
I was trying to figure out why it was red.
Alright, Mrs. Mable, it's late, okay.
And I, and I didn't eat dinner yet, yes.
Okay. Any conflicts with any of these, as we get closer to some, uh, we always have the ability to make some modifications to that, but we do try to be respectful of these. Okay.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes, Mrs. Picard?
Um, I would request that we not meet on the 4th of November. That is Diwali, which is the highest holiday for the Hindu, Sikh, and Jain's religions, kind of like meeting on Christmas or meeting on Yom Kippur. So I would ask and propose that we meet on the 3rd of November, instead of the 4th of November. November's very tricky, because we've got Veterans Day on Thursday, and obviously, um, Thanksgiving on a Thursday, and then Diwali on a Thursday, so I would ask if we could look at changing to November 3rd, which would be the Wednesday.
Conflicts in the...
I don't think so.
Is that agreeable?
I think we just have to check that CAM can actually accommodate us on a Wednesday, 'cause there are other boards that meet.
Yep, so we'll, we'll put that in as pending CAM confirmation, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Okay, perfect, and if not, we will modify that and, and have that discussion on September 9th. Fair?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Jumping into old business here, we have the second reading of, and the vote of the educator Hall of Fame inductee. Mrs. Mable, you want to lead us through this here?
Sure, so I think we all, um, reviewed last time, I, I think at our last meeting in June, about the, um, committee that nominated, um, Mary Julie Gregwire to, um, be our next Hall of Fame inductee. All the data's here. Sounds like an absolute superstar, I've enjoyed communicating with her. And tied to that, just to share with everyone, just like we've done in the past, just not this past year, we're going to have a, um, celebration of, uh, Teachers' Night to be, um, put in a certain location, it's normally been in the library, but there are over thirty, or at least thirty, professional teacher status teachers this year, as well as the Hall of Fame inductee. So, um, Greg Landry's looking for potentially another venue. And hopefully, we can, um, have that celebration, and it would include, if we were to induct, uh, to vote on Mary Julie Gregwire's night, she would be honored at that event. And it's down right now for, um, October 27th, which is a Wednesday.
October 22nd, okay. Alright, thank you for the explanation, is there a motion from the committee?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Vichy Lynch?
To induct Mary Julie Gregwire, yes.
And, uh, is there a second?
Second.
By Ms. Petrowski, alright, any discussion? Mrs. Picard?
No.
Ms. Petrowski?
No.
Ms. Vichy Lynch?
Just want to thank Amy for her hard work on this, and...
This is the fun part, so I was lucky to get to do this.
Mrs. Mable, anything else?
Um, just that, she's absolutely thrilled, and if people are watching, we're accepting nominations for future teachers. There are criteria on the school committee page, they have to be retired a certain number of years, and they need certain support. We've had other candidates nominated as well, and we keep that open, and as more support comes in, they might be future candidates, so. Honoring some great people who have led our district.
Awesome, so my only, uh, question is really, uh, clarification really. Could you just remind us who is on the committee? I know it's a committee of five, do you...
Yes, so, uh...
I should have pressed, I'm sorry.
I know, we did that back in May, so, myself and Pam Petrowski were from the school committee.
Jane Broderick.
Jane Broderick, um, Greg Landry, and then, um, Kate Rozzi from the community.
Okay.
And then the, the, uh, you know, Jane Broderick was the pick from the, um, Teachers Association.
Okay, alright, it's perfect. Alright, very good, so we'll do a roll call vote, seeing no other questions. Uh, Mrs. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Vichy Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mable?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so five, oh, congratulations to Mary Gregwire.
Yay!
Alright, okay, moving on to new business, we have, sorry, I'm losing my page here, we have overnight field trips. Sorry, there we go, wrong page. So, Dr. Gilligan, do you want to walk us through, uh, what we've done here?
So, we wanted to put this on the agenda, the overnight field trips, um, that are coming up. I believe the first, um, big one was for November.
October.
October.
Cross-country.
Oh, cross-country, Van Cortlandt State Park in Manhattanville, I couldn't, I can't believe I forgot that one, that's a big one.
Excuse me, could this be presented, so that the public can see what we're talking about?
I don't think any of us have it.
I don't have any.
Oh, I have it. You want me to present? It was in the packet that was sent out to us electronically.
Isn't it linked there, Dr. Mealy?
That's not a link.
Oh, sorry, it's the way you're highlighting it.
Right.
Can we get it presented?
Yeah, Helen was...
I think Helen's trying to.
Do you want me to present?
Yes, please, sorry. Thanks, Helen.
Okay, just give me a second.
We're not in the confines of our normal place.
So Jim, I, I need you to stop presenting.
There we go.
So you can see it.
And I'm sorry, it's gonna be incredibly small, because... Because it's, it's... Because it is, I apologize.
Alright.
So I thought we were just gonna mention that we have...
Okay, so this is just the first reading, uh, of the trips, and, um, Dr. Gilligan, can you just give us a quick rundown, there's no action to be taken tonight?
No... No action tonight. We actually just wanted to get the trips on the books to take a look at because this really goes towards our travel restrictions. And we'll have to have the COVID task force and the medical and our health people weigh in because, you know, Massachusetts follows the CDC travel guidance, you know, and that's different. You know, so we will have, we'll continue to review the travel restrictions and guidance and have a recommendation. But we wanted to mention that there were some trips coming up and we know we have to take action. But we have to look at the changing, look at the current guidance and how it applies to our students traveling out of state. Okay?
All right. Any questions?
Yes.
Any questions, Mrs. Picard?
So this document doesn't provide reasons for the trips. It has the staff member who did it and like where they're going, but like the first one just says Scottsdale, Arizona. I'm guessing maybe that's DECA, but it would be helpful when we get this again to know why people are going to Atlanta or Boston Copley or Orlando, Florida. So that would be helpful to me in the future. And then I assume we're only gonna approve these, you know, as the guidance comes along. It's tricky because we're talking about buying tickets and stuff, but that further detail of what the trip is for would be helpful.
Yeah. Happy to do that. We have that. And again, we wanted to get this on. You know, I don't know if Cheryl or Suzanne want to speak to it, but it is something we have to monitor. And Brian LaGrasse, the public health director, we have to monitor and keep an eye on to make decisions.
I have a question.
One second. Ms. Petrowski? I'm just gonna try to go in order.
Yeah, sorry. You're right. No, I was just noticing that nature's classroom is no longer on there as an overnight trip. And I'm assuming that's just COVID-related.
It could be. And we can get that information.
Okay. Vitsky Lynch?
No questions.
Mrs. Mabley?
So, sorry about that. Yes. Greg took mine. I see that all these applications were back in, in, in June. And so I'm wondering if somebody could circle back to all these and see if these people are still sponsoring these trips in the first place before we even have to read them over. I think I'd hate to approve a trip and then find out that it's no longer being offered. So.
And my only, was that it? I'm sorry.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. My only thought or question is particularly with any of these that may be abroad, typically there are payment plans that start months in advance. So I would just be curious what the refund policy, insurance policy is. Some of these trips are rather expensive and I want to be sure that our students and their families are protected with that. So, okay. All right. So we will look forward to more information at our next meeting. Okay. Dr. Mealy, do you want to bring us into the transportation contract extension?
So Helen, can you stop presenting now? Have you? While I'm bringing?
Yes, I stopped.
Thank you. While I'm bringing this up, I want to apologize. If I was on the ball, I would have asked them to override the controls that shut the AC off at 9 o'clock. But I was not on the ball.
I do notice you are not wearing a tie and a jacket though. So, thank you.
Maybe you were just overly optimistic that our meeting would end by now.
Could be. So this is here because we originally approved a three-year contract with two-year extensions with NRT, our bus company, at our discretion and solely at our discretion. And we have no reasons to change that, but for purchasing rules to continue that, we actually need the school committee to approve each one. So we'll be coming back again next year. We'll probably do it before school's out for the fifth year. But we're going to ask you to suspend the rules tonight because we'll have started school prior to our next meeting.
Okay. So I would pause and see if anyone has a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the extension of the current transportation contract with NRT Bus as specified in the contract language. Oh, sorry. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, to vote on this tonight.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm gonna give credit to Pam. She was in my left ear. Okay. Motion to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All right. We will do roll call vote. Mrs. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Vitsky Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mabley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. 5-0. Okay. Is there any other motions?
I would like to make a motion to approve the extension of the current transportation contract with NRT Bus as specified in the contract language. Contracts in excess of three years must be approved by the school committee.
Perfect. Thank you, Mrs. Mabley. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. All right. Any discussion? I will assume none and we'll move to Mrs. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Vitsky Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mabley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. 5-0. Okay. All right. Before we adjourn, if the committee agrees, we haven't had a public in-person for, I don't know, 18 months or so. And so we have always had public comment at the beginning of our meetings to discuss agenda issues. And we've had public comment at the end. Since we have not had public comment, we've, I'm sorry, since we have not had public for the past 18 months, it is not on the agenda. So I'm curious if the committee is interested in hearing from the public at the end of the meeting.
Sure. It's fine with me if you have something.
All right. We're here anyway and we're hot. So is there any public comment? Anyone?
Don't have to beg.
I think that you should push back at least on the guidelines a little bit.
Would you just like to?
Oh.
Sorry. Just, just so people can hear you. I'm sorry. I can hear you okay, but people back home can't.
This is Mrs. Knapp. Again, I'm just, I'm just encouraging you to push back at the DC guidelines that came out. Just to continue to push back. You've heard a lot of residents come forward and speak today. So it's important that, that those voices are extended to the upper levels of the state education commissioner and such. Okay?
And crew.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any others? All right. Any comments from the committee? I'll start with you, Mrs. Picard.
Yeah. I really want to thank the public for their input, for their emails, for their phone calls, both tonight and prior to this night, for all those people who came in person and made public comment, and for those watching at home. I really appreciate that. Public comment is for the public. I heard some grumbling when I didn't make a public comment at the beginning of the meeting, but I did take my opportunity for participation throughout the deliberation and the votes. And that will be my pattern going forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Petrowski?
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Mrs. Vitsky Lynch?
I just wanted, to Helen's point, we didn't get a chance to explain our votes very much. And I don't think we need to go into great detail, but to me, it comes down to erring on the side of caution. And we need to keep kids in school. And the best way to keep kids in school, we're here to protect kids and to make sure learning happens, is to be masked. And that's the way, that's the reason I voted the way I did.
Mrs. Mabley?
So I was going to say a similar thing. I really appreciate it. It's hard to come up and make a public comment. You all, we got the emails that Andrew tallied up. And, you know, we all read all those. We look at your links. We look at all your feelings and passions. And as you saw, it's across the board here. But, but this is why we do what we do. This is very important. And honestly, same thing. We need kids in school five days a week. If we can peel back more of these layers, we want to do that. I think starting with that and then shoving everybody back, if something were to go wrong, would cause us a lot of problems, especially since we can't do remote learning. I know last year when I voted, I was a swing vote for, for hybrid, which was not very fun, but I, I'm glad we did it. And I honestly, back then, I was worried that by the end of September, we were going to be fully remote. But I still wanted to give it a try. That worked out. But there were so many mitigations. And I think the masks were a huge part of that. And so I want to make sure that when everybody comes back, including the kids who have never been in school because they have family issues or whatever and have Ola, they need a chance to come back and ease their way in. And, you know, if we can change things up in October, I'm all for that. But we need to start school successfully and not in a hysteria.
All right. Thank you. I just really want to thank everyone from the public for being here. Cheryl, Suzanne, Dr. Chen, you know, especially for speaking and presenting, always, always difficult. This is very divisive. I mean, I think if we all look around the country, you know, we see different things going on. You know, I, I think this is an amazing community. And I hope that we are here in October and we are making changes and modifications to this as we are allowed to do. And we do take all of the comments and the questions and feedback truly to heart. And I appreciate people reaching out. And I've tried to respond to everybody in the community who has done so. So thank you very much. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn to our next public meeting on September 9th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Who moved it? Sorry.
Amy. Mabley.
And who seconded? All right. Mrs. Vitsky Lynch. All right. Any discussion?
God, no.
Mrs. Picard? You're already home. So any, any discussion? All right. So we'll do roll call vote. Mrs. Picard?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitsky Lynch? I'm sorry, Mrs. Petrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitsky Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mabley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. 5-0. We are adjourned until September 20th, September 9th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.